I will read the Plan and Zoning Commission rules and procedures. The Plan and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the city council. The city council will hold a public hearing and make the final decision on all matters before the commission, others in site plans and subdivision plans, unless denials or conditional approvals thereof are appealed. Please contact the city clerk or community development department staff 515-689-9485 for details on council hearings. The applicant will be given 10 minutes to present the request. If applicants wish to share materials not already submitted with the application, please email them to planning@dmgov.org so a staff host will be able to share them on the screen when you present. Proponents and then opponents from the public are then allowed to speak in that order. With each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. Staff has attempted to compile a list of people who would like to speak on each item. Staff will first call on these people and then will open it up to anyone else who wishes to speak. To request to speak during the hearing, please use the raise hand function on Zoom webinar via the internet or dial star nine on your phone. Once permission to speak is given to unmute and mute, dial star six on your phone. You will be required to give your name and address for the record prior to speaking. Also, we ask that you keep your microphones and phones on mute unless you've been given the chance to address the commission by the chair. Applicant is then allowed five minutes for rebuttal if any opponent spoke. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. The hearing will then be closed and the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report unless an individual present or a member of the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. The city of Des Moines is pleased to provide accommodations to individuals or groups with disabilities and encourages participation in city government. Please know that typical accommodations may be limited by emergency requirements as issued by the state of Iowa and the city of Des Moines. Tyler, it said we have a quorum. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the February 4 meeting?
Before I could do a roll call first.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
That's all right, no problem. Abby Chungus?
Here.
Rocky Spazato? Rocky? Okay, we'll come back. Will Page?
Here.
Johnny Alsovar?
Here.
Emily Webb?
Here.
Dory Brials?
Here.
Jan Fried?
Here.
Kayla Burksen?
Here.
Lisa Howard?
Here.
Steve Wallace?
Here.
Carolyn Jensen?
Here.
Francis Bogus?
Here.
Greg Watier?
Here.
And Greg Jones? And Rocky, are you with us? I see you on here. All right, well, I see Rocky on here, but we'll go ahead and we do have quorum with 13 present that didn't respond. Rocky might be having some technical difficulties, so we can move to the approval of the minutes.
There a motion for to approve the minutes?
Dory, this is Carolyn, I'll move.
Thank you.
All right, Greg Jones?
Yes.
Abby Chungus?
Yes.
Greg Watier?
Francis.
Okay. Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Carolyn Jensen?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Kayla Burksen?
Yes.
Jan Fried?
Yes.
Emily Webb?
Yes.
Dory Brials?
Yes.
Johnny Alsovar?
Yes.
Will Page?
Yes.
And Rocky Spazato? Okay, so motion carries 12-0-1.
Thank you, Tyler. I believe we have two possible items that could be moved to consent. Jason, is item three or we?
Chair, members of the commission, Jason Van Essen with the planning staff. On item three, we did not get any opposition to it. The applicant has agreed to the staff recommendation. We did get a letter from the neighborhood association expressing neutrality. They had a few questions. We could do a quick presentation if the commission is interested, but there isn't technically opposition unless there's somebody in the audience, which we would also need to check on that as well.
Do we see anybody in the audience for item?
I see a raised hand. Yeah, yeah, we have one, so we'll go ahead and let's just.
Leave it on public.
Yes.
Okay. And item number four, Eric?
Yes, Madam Chair, item four, the applicant is in agreement with the staff recommendation. There's no recorded opposition and unless there's somebody here this evening to speak to it, we would recommend considering that for the consent agenda.
Is there a motion to move item number four to the consent agenda?
Dory, this is Jan, I'll move it.
Thank you, Jan.
Johnny Alsovar?
Yes.
Emily Webb?
Yes.
Dory Brials?
Yes.
Jan Fried?
Yes.
Kayla Burksen?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jensen? Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Greg Watier?
Yes.
Greg Jones?
Yes.
Abby Chungus?
Yes.
Rocky Spazato, are you with us yet?
Yep, I'm here.
All right.
Yes.
Okay, Will Page?
Yes.
And Carolyn?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 14-0.
Thank you, Tyler. We'll now go to the consent public hearing items. Item number one is a city initiated request for an amendment to the text of chapter 134 of the city code to make revisions allowing for minor expansion of legal non-conforming one and two household residential uses and to allow new detached accessory structures associated with those uses. Is there anyone on the commission who would like to hear this item? Is there anyone from the public who would like to hear this item?
Madam Chair, this is Eric Lundee. They can use the raise hand function or the star nine function on their phone.
Nice seeing you raised hands.
Okay, we'll move on to item number two. Request from Calvin Park Mixed Use Condominiums represented by Carl Codem for review and approval of a first amendment to the Calvin Community Legacy PUD conceptual plan on property located at 4326 Hickman Road. Is there anyone from the public who would like to hear this item this evening?
We do have one hand raised.
Okay, then I guess we'll need to move that to the non-consent portion of our public hearing. And item number four then is a request from the Meyer Family LLC represented by Charles Meyer for the following regarding the property located at 1324 and 1348 East Euclid Avenue. And it's requested rezoning from MX3 to RX2. Is there anyone in the public now that wishes to hear this item? Okay, then we have items one and four will remain on consent. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
This is Emily, I'll move.
Thank you, Emily.
Abby Chungus?
Yes.
Rocky Spazato?
Yes.
Will Page?
Yes.
Johnny Alsovar?
Yes.
Emily Webb?
Yes.
Dory Brials?
Yes.
Jan Fried?
Yes.
Kayla Burksen?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jensen?
Yes.
Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Greg Watier?
Yes.
Thank you. And Greg Jones?
Yes.
Motion to approve consent agenda items one and four carries 14-0.
Thank you, Tyler. We'll now start the public hearing and we'll start with item number two. And this is the request from Calvin Park Mixed Use Condominiums for property located at 4326 Hickman Road. And I believe Jason is going to present.
Yes, thank you Chair, Jason Van Essen with the city's planning staff. This is the first amendment to the Calvin Community PUD. A lot of the items you see there are listed on the agenda are really cleanup items. The real thing that's bringing this forward is some change in signage that they would like to do that is a little bit different than what was shown on the original PUD. Just a couple of highlights, the building was actually built a story shorter and with some less units. You'll see a few items crossed out. They do want to reserve the ability to potentially build a skybridge in the future and then access gate. At one point, we thought maybe that would come off and then smaller cleanup things have to do with utility screening and the driveway, emergency access driveway, and I'll show that to you here in a minute. I know that some of our, some of the feedback I've heard from neighbors is there was an impression that a driveway would be added. It's not there today and I apologize if that was confusing. We're actually not talking about making any changes from what's on the ground at the moment. So this is the subject property, it's on the south side of Hickman Avenue, 44th Street to the west. You have the mixed use building, medical clinic on the ground floor and residential units above, a townhome or row home, building at the back of the site. It has its own driveway. The primary access for the commercial lot is off of Hickman. There is also this, this area here, this is originally that was thought to maybe it would be constructed with grasscrete. It was always intended to be for emergency vehicles only. We ended up working with the applicant and they constructed it with a stained concrete and added bollards and signage and there's no changes proposed to that. Just the drawing submitted, the amendment to the PUD showing the footprints of the buildings that are there and general layout. That's the row building, tunnel building, mixed use building at the front. I think the bigger thing for the commission to focus on and why this is really in front of us tonight is the signage. They did construct the monument sign and that monument sign was envisioned with the original PUD, but the way it was put together, it only allowed signage on the north face towards the street. It didn't account for any other signage and they've come, excuse me, and the area on that face was a little bit smaller. They didn't have quite as much text, so they're proposing to expand that on the north side. And then let me zoom in here at the bottom. They want to add what's really more like wayfinding signage on the west face of that monument sign just to help people figure out where to go and how to access the site. There's a wayfinding sign is proposed by the driveway of Hickman that you can see just the standard building mounted signage. We reviewed this, you know, looked through it, looked against the, what was proposed. We're very comfortable with their proposing. We'd recommend approval. Happy to answer any questions you might have. Just quickly, here's the response map. We did get one card back in favor with no comments. And with that, if there's anything that you'd like to ask me, happy to answer questions.
If there are no questions from the commission, is the applicant here to present this evening?
If you're here to represent this item, please raise your hand and then we'll go ahead and give you the ability to speak. Oh, here, here we go, Steve. Steve, if you want to go ahead and unmute yourself and introduce yourself.
Steve Grasso, architect, GTG architect, Johnson, Iowa. Just want to reiterate. Look forward to moving forward with us.
I'm struggling hearing Steve, is anybody else having a problem?
Yeah, he's cutting out.
Yeah. Steve, we're not able to hear you.
In short, we support the project, the staff's description of the project. Nothing's bad.
Steve, you're still cutting out on us. Dory, maybe we could just check to see if there were any questions from the commission for the applicant and then I can try to get those to them and maybe, maybe in writing somehow or something.
If not, can we go to any speakers in opposition?
Valerie, Valerie, you've been given permission to speak if you want to unmute yourself.
Yeah, I think, can you hear me now?
Yeah, please provide your name and address for the record.
My name's Valerie Findley. I live at 2102 44th Street in Des Moines, 50312, or 10, excuse me.
And Valerie, what, what are your comments or questions this evening?
Well, I have a one comment and one question, I think. My, my comment is more of a technical issue. Because I live in close proximity to the building that we're talking about, I've received two letters from the city planning and zoning commission. And I'm just curious about the, both of the letters that I received didn't have the items struck through that you're showing tonight. So I'm just curious about that.
So, Dory, is it, is it okay for me to jump in and answer that question?
Please do.
Okay. When the application first came in, we were under the impression that they were no longer interested in building those two elements. But as time passed and we interacted with the applicant, they indicated that they still might pursue those at some point. So we updated the agenda to strike those because they, they removed those from their application. So instead of just deleting them, we just did a strike through. That way people would understand that, you know, that those hadn't disappeared.
Okay. Yeah, there was just a discrepancy from, you know, the, the letters we received and what's, what's being presented here tonight. So I'm actually very much mostly in, in in accord with everything here, but I just had one clarification and I think you tried to really address this earlier, but I still was left a little confused. And that's regarding the, where it's in the text of addition of the second access on 44th Street. And after your presentation, it looked like we, we were not going to add an extra driveway there?
That is correct. And, and the way that our updated agenda, let me go to the, my first slide here. We actually changed the language to say modification of the north drive access to 44th Street. And all it's, all we're trying to do is just account for the fact that grasscrete, which is a product that grass would grow out of, wasn't used. We ended up using stained concrete with bollards and signage. So there's no new driveway proposed. This, this is just really a cleanup thing on, on our documents.
Okay, well, I'm happy for that clarification. I actually went through that driveway the other day. So that was my main question. I was concerned about that. So thank you for that clarification and otherwise I think that this is all great.
Okay, are there any other people who wish to speak on this item this evening?
Nice seeing you, Dory. Dory, did you accidentally mute yourself?
I'm sorry. I, I think, now, now can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I, I said we now will close the public hearing and ask the commissioners for their thoughts.
Dory, this is Rocky, I'll move staff.
Thank you, Rocky.
Will Page?
Yes.
Johnny Alsovar?
Yes.
Emily Webb?
Yes.
Dory Brials?
Yes.
Jan Fried?
Yes.
Kayla Burksen?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jensen?
Yes.
Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Greg Watier?
Yes.
Greg Jones?
Yes.
Abby Chungus?
Yes.
And Rocky Spazato?
Yes.
That motion carries 14-0.
Thank you, Tyler. We're now ready for item number three on the agenda, a request from Woodsonia Acquisitions LLC represented by Jeff Elliott for the following regarding the property at 2510 Ingersoll Avenue. This includes a requested rezoning and site plan.
Chair, members of the commission, Jason Van Essen with the planning staff. Yeah, so the proposal, the first step and kind of process is to, a rezoning to allow a drive-through component for the restaurant use. So that's the, what's driving part B of the request. And then part C is their site plan. There are three items that need type two relief that are making their site plan become a public carrying site plan versus one that could be approved by staff. And so we brought that all forward together since this is really a site development issue and, and thinking it through, it made sense to tackle that all at one time. This is subject properties on the south side of Ingersoll Avenue. Couple photographs, originally built as a Hardee's, it's been a variety of restaurants. Some renderings from the applicant showing the intent for the architecture of the building Site plan showing kind of queuing for the drive-through facility. We are supporting, putting, or keeping the drive-through on the street side. In the MX3 district, normally you'd be limited to the side or rear. There are grade issues, the floor of the building is higher than the grade of the site, so it's not practical to put it on, move it to this side. And if the drive-through is on the backside, it would greatly reduce the ability to stack, which I think stacking is important, you know, providing as much of that onsite stacking as possible. There is one parking stall over here that's partially or mostly past the front wall of the building, so that requires type two relief as well. And then the third item is the location of the front door. There would be no front door facing towards the street, it'd be on the west end of the building. The attempt, as you can see from those renderings, which I can go back to, is to try to provide a strong visual connection. One of the conditions you'll see in the staff report is that we want to make sure whatever that crosswalk material noted, that it's either a paver or some sort of painting or stain like is shown in the image, really being a kind of a strong instrument in providing that connectivity. There is a patio that's proposed on the front of the site to try to help pull it all together. So we are recommending approval, just a couple housekeeping conditions. The easternmost driveway should be reduced to the necessary width for one-way traffic. They are proposing it to be one-way traffic, but we want to just make sure that's narrowed to support that or reinforce that. Item two is, I kind of meant, I mentioned that already about having the crosswalks onsite, the favors or stained concrete or other comparable means. Then we had a spot where we thought maybe some more plantings could go in in the drive-through area. And then four and five are just standard conditions to make sure we get everything cleaned up through the administrative process. This is the notice map. This is a letter from the Woodland Heights organization. The applicant met a couple of different times with both the Woodland Heights Neighborhood Organization and also the Ingersoll Grand Business Association to get their input. Excuse me. The neighborhood voted to be neutral, they identified some pros and cons, they had some concerns, I'll let you look at those. I think, you know, some of their concerns would be addressed by the staff recommendation. I think one of the things I glossed over in my presentation is that for uses, we are recommending that the only uses that, that you could do on the property would be those allowed in the MX2 district plus a drive-through restaurant. So that addresses their concern with maybe this would lead to other uses on the site. Then we had the cards in favor. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have for staff.
If there are no questions from, if there are no questions from the commission, is the applicant present to speak this evening?
Yep, now, Clark, I've given you permission to speak, go ahead and help, help yourself to the mic.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Clark Snyder, Simonson and Associates Architects, 1717 Ingersoll Avenue representing Woodsonia Acquisitions for this project, for the Starbucks project at 2510 Ingersoll. Jason did a great job with his presentation. We're in full support of staff recommendations. I'll keep this short and sweet, but we're excited to move on to the next steps with this project and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. I also want to note, you know, approval from the avenue. I also want to note, you know, approval from the Avenue's Board for this project, support for this project as well. Like I said, if we got a long agenda, I'll keep it short and sweet. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the commission? If not, are there any speakers in support of this request this evening?
We have raised hand. I don't know if it's Carol's in support or proposition or just has questions, but I'll give her permission to talk.
Thanks.
Go ahead and unmute yourself, Carol.
Awesome, thank you. I'm not sure if I'm in support or against either, but I just have some questions and observations.
Hey, sorry to interrupt you. Could you give us your full name and address? I know you're one of our frequent attendees, but I for the record.
No problem, yeah, frequent flyer, Carol Maher, M-A-H-E-R. I live at 701 Polk Boulevard in Des Moines. And this is a really car-centric design, especially because you want to have drive-through. And my concern is that this, the city, is committing a lot of money and focus on promoting the bike lanes on Ingersoll. And I think the stacking and the queuing of your drive-through customers is going to bleed out onto Ingersoll and into the bike lane. And I'm wondering how you, if you have any plans to mitigate the risk that you're putting bicyclists at when this happens? Well, you don't need to answer. I know, I don't, I'm just a civilian. My questions typically aren't answered. But also, it would be nice to have bike lanes showing your rendering, because I think it's a big miss. You're focusing again on highlighting the parking that you're carving out and the amount of car traffic that's going to be turning over on these curb cuts and your drive-through and the parking is really contrary to good biking strategies. And I think that's frankly a big risk to bicyclists.
Carol, this is Jason with the planning staff. Clark will, he has, after all, all the comments are taken from the public, Clark will try to address, he'll have an opportunity to address those questions and whatnot, okay?
Okay. And in the rendering, there's a divided sidewalk shown. It looks like a divided sidewalk. I wasn't sure if that was indeed divided sidewalk or if or what that was. And if the owner of the property will be responsible for shoveling both of those sidewalks? And if so, is there a possibility, because as you know, bus stops have a hard time getting cleared in the winter? I realize this is one that's sheltered and that Dart is responsible for, but is there any way to have the proprietor sign up for sort of being a backup or first defense on that shoveling for that that Dart stop? So that because sometimes it takes a while for them to get out there to clear those stops. And since it's right there and a prominent position in front of your store, if you could maybe be a good neighbor and sign, you know, step up and clear that perhaps before Dart gets around to it, it would be, you know, really a great thing, especially again, since you're focusing so much on cars in your business. If you and you have here, you have a Dart stop right in front and bike lanes out front, it would be nice to pay a little bit attention to to the other modes of transit that are going by your door. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak this evening? If not?
I'm not seeing any.
Okay, great. Thank you, Jason. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the staff at this point? If not, we'll have the applicant will have five minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you. This is Clark from Simonsen again. To your point on the, Jason, if you could pull up that isometric of the front that shows that front patio in relationship to the building. You see the row of trees and the double sidewalk lane. All of that has already been designed and dictated with the Ingersoll Streetscape development. So we just incorporated that new design that will be constructed over the next couple years into our into our renderings and solution here. And you see the steps on the west side. There's a strong pedestrian connection to the front door. But then there's also what the developer's committed to is a patio that activates that Ingersoll Streetscape space. And it's an opportunity for the public to engage in that patio. And bike lane in front of here, there's a bike rack that's further to the east on the east end of that patio. So that's kind of that bike circulation. If I can speak to the the drive-through stacking, I know that's always, there's going to be peak times with coffee in the mornings. We understand that. We have a lot of bike traffic now on Ingersoll, and I think everybody's cognizant of that. But we've done everything we can to maximize the stacking within the site. And we're probably over double what the city requires and doing everything we can to keep those lanes open and safe.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? If not, we'll close the public hearing. And commissioners, it's time for you to discuss.
Dory, this is Rocky. All move staff.
Thank you, Rocky.
Will Page?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
There was, there was another individual that had raised their hand. I don't know if that was too late for the.
She Valerie did raise, she raised her hand after the applicant's rebuttal. So I mean, it's up to the chair to decide. I mean, it was, the hearing had been closed, but Dory, if you wanted to consider it, you could.
Yes, if they stayed at their five minutes.
Valerie, go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your name and address again.
Okay, Valerie Findley, 2102 44th Street, Des Moines, 50310. And I just, after seeing the renderings again and the explanation of the sidewalks and things, I was noticing that it looks like there's steps in two areas of access going in. And I'm just wondering where the handicap parking would be in relation to an accessible way to into the business.
They would need to provide a stall on their site. So they have, I don't know if you can see the site plan, but they're showing an accessible stall with an accessible route here. With the way the existing building and site lays, there's it's, they don't, you know, there's challenges to doing anything for Ingersoll. So I, I think they meet the intent of the code. Our engineering department's reviewed it and not raised any concern.
Okay, so it looks like next, if I'm looking at this correctly, where your pointer is, it looks like the access to the building would be through the line of cars that are in the queue for picking up their coffee. Is that correct?
Yeah, the parking is on the outside and then the queue line is circles around the building.
Okay, I think that's problematic. And then where would be the closest access for somebody who was like potentially using a wheelchair?
There's a door that faces the parking lot.
Okay, right there.
Right here. Yep.
Okay, well, I think as a person who assists many people who use wheelchairs, this is really problematic from a safety standpoint. And that would be my comment. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have, we'll return to the motion that was made.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
At this point, you'll have to allow the applicant to have a rebuttal.
A rebuttal to that? Okay. I'm sorry, I thought Jason did a good job of everything.
If Clark, if Clark, Clark, you can decline it if you want to, but you're welcome to speak.
I have nothing additional. Thank you.
Thank you, Clark. Okay, now we'll return to the motion to approve the request.
All right, so we have Rocky moved, Will Page?
Yes.
Johnny Alsovar?
Yes.
Emily Webb?
Yes.
Dory Bries?
Yes.
Jan Fried?
Yes.
Kayla Burksen?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jensen?
Yes.
Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Greg Watier?
Yes.
Greg Jones?
Yes.
Abby Chungas?
Yes.
And Rocky Spazato?
Yes.
That motion, that motion carries 14-0.
Thank you. We're now ready for item number five, which is a request from Hilltop Housing LLC, represented by J.B. Conlon for property located at 3722 Hubble Avenue, 3726 Hubble Avenue, 3680 Kennedy Drive, and 3688 Kennedy Drive.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, this is Bert Droste, planner for the City of Des Moines. Are you able to see my screen right now?
Yeah, it's really squishy.
Yeah, it's not looking right on my monitor either, which is why I asked.
I wonder if you maximize your upper, your window on the upper right.
Yeah. Okay, so the item before you tonight is a request to amend the Hilltop PUD located on in the 3700 block of Hubble Avenue. They are proposing to replace two previously approved multi-household buildings and some duplex structures with two slightly larger multi-household structures. There would be a zero net gain on the total number of units in the dwelling or the development. It would remain constant at 254. So here is the map of the existing site. You can see there are four existing multifamily buildings and a clubhouse structure. The original PUD allowed for two additional buildings here in the northern portion of the site, and then some duplexes along the eastern portion. They're now proposing to construct one new multi-household building here in the northern portion and then one in the middle of the eastern portion here. But as I mentioned, the total number of units on the property would remain constant from what was originally allowed at 254. So as part of this, they are amending the city's comprehensive land use plan for the north half of the property. The north half was previously designated as medium density residential, which only allows up to 17 units per acre. Their density right now is at 17.1, so it's just slightly over that. So we did just do a map cleanup and have it amended to be high density residential. Here is the general layout of what they're proposing. You can see north would be to your left. There's the proposed building here at the north, which I think is the first building that they would build, and then the second building here within the eastern portion of the property. On this slide, you can see that they are proposing a pretty dense buffering along both the east and the north property lines. And you can't really tell, but they are showing a retaining wall here, so the building would kind of be built into the hill, so that would lessen the impact from the properties to the east. Here is the elevations that they provided for the eastern building. Overall, staff was pleased with these elevations. They're very similar to the existing buildings that are the third and fourth that were constructed on the property. However, as I'll get to in our staff recommendation, we have recommended that they increase the amount of brick and masonry on the east facade. Right now, they're only showing a wainscoting generally, but we're asking that they increase that to cover at least two-thirds of the east facade. And again, this is the east facade, so it would be what would face the properties to the east. Same goes for the proposed building at the north. Generally, nice elevations on three of the four sides, however, on the north side that backs up more or less to the four mile floodplain, they're only showing a wainscote below the windows on the first floor of the building. And then the one other condition that I'll get to in the staff recommendation is that we wanted them to expand on this note here. Right now, it just says through-wall air conditioners. And we are wanting that to, I guess, be expanded so that it says that the, any through-wall air conditioner shall be of a color and design that better blends with the building. And then this was just the existing clubhouse building. I'll show you some photos from the site. Here's the existing clubhouse building. These are the buildings that were in the third and fourth phases of this project, which the proposed buildings would be quite similar to. In the air conditioner units on these buildings are pretty well-integrated into the architecture of the building. So our condition on the air conditioner units is really just ensuring that these through-wall units generally match what's within these buildings here. We felt that these do an adequate job of blending those units into the buildings. This is looking north from the site, showing the open space now where the northern building would be located. Another angle, I don't know if I mentioned it, but as part of this project, they would be expanding this parking lot and then providing a drive connection to the development to the east that the applicant already or currently owns and has developed. So that would provide some extra emergency egress for public safety vehicles if needed. This is looking at the eastern portion of the site where the eastern building would be. You can see there's an existing row of trees here, and they would also be putting in that buffer that would include even more trees there. Just another view looking straight east from the site. And then these, this is the view from Hubble Avenue. And you can see these air conditioning units kind of project a little more than the newer buildings at the north end of the site. So the purpose of our condition was just so that the AC units looked more like the newer buildings than on, than these buildings here along Hubble Avenue. And one more photo. So as far as our staff recommendation goes, we were supportive of it. As I've mentioned a couple times now, the net density of the development hasn't changed. They're just, they're still proposing a total number of units at 254. We believe that the architecture of the buildings are generally compatible with the surrounding area, so we recommended approval of parts A, B, and C, just subject to seven modifications. And I believe the applicant agrees with all of them except for item number one. And then I believe they might be making their case for item number two. But item number one was just that we want all four facades of each building to have at least two-thirds of stone or masonry on each facade. Two, we just wanted to note added, it says any through-wall air conditioning unit shall be designed and painted to blend with the building. And maybe painted wasn't a good word, maybe just end of a color to blend with the building is really getting at our intent. Three, we just want them to show the existing sidewalks that are along Hubble Avenue. Four, we want them to extend one of the sidewalks within the eastern portion of the site so that it connects with the sidewalk along Hubble. Five, just wanted the note regarding the landscape buffer to state that the proposed six-foot tall fence would be solid. Six, we, the PUD currently states it shall be landscaped in accordance with R3, which is the retired code. So we wanted that updated to N3 or NX3, the new code. And then the same goes for the signage and condition number seven. The current PUD says signage regulations shall meet R3 requirements, so we're just saying NX3. And I'll let the applicant present this, but this is the justification they're going to use for why it's not necessary to comply with the condition regarding building materials. Here are the consent cards. We had three cards come back in support. Here's the map. And then we had an email from the car wash owner also in support. And then we had an email from the car wash owner also in support. And then here the letter that the applicant sent is part of the required neighborhood outreach, so. And then the mailing list. So did anyone have any questions for me?
Madam Chair, this is Will Page. I have a question, Bert. The, the site allows, contradict me if I'm wrong, a total of two hundred and fifty-four units, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
If the two buildings that are proposed are constructed, how many units would be left that would be available?
This would max out the two hundred and fifty-four units.
Okay, so in other words, with these two buildings, there would be no other construction on the site. I mean, the site would be complete in and of itself, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thanks, Bert.
Any other questions for Bert? If not, the applicant has ten minutes to present.
Madam Chair, JB Conlon has his hand raised.
Great.
He's unmuted.
Hey, everybody, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thanks, Brett. I think you did a great job there, and thanks, everybody, for your time tonight. A couple of things I want to bring to your attention on the, the change in the sites. The back building, the one that is towards the north side of the site, that one is actually going to move to a senior building. Right now, everything was planned, everything on the balance of the site was planned for family, but we would restrict that to seniors over fifty-five. We thought that was something that the neighbors would like a little bit, and, and we also, our, our senior building in the front has been very, very high occupancy. The whole site's been high occupancy, but we think there's some more room for the senior there. With, with the issues on number one and number two, primarily, the, the, the thing I'd like to have everybody understand is how difficult these projects, these affordable projects are to put together. The, the, the financing stack is extremely tight on these buildings, so every additional requirement that we have comes at a cost, and it could potentially come at a cost as not being able to do the projects. In terms of what we would do first and second, that was one thing I wanted to correct, we're going to put both of these in for applications to the IFA next round that, that is coming up probably in April. And so we could get neither of them, we could get both of them, or we could get one of them, but it's not necessarily one or the other. So these were designed so they could be built separately and, or together at the same time. So back to the issue on number, number one, the you know, our, our stance is that we would rather follow what IFA requires, which we think is pretty stringent, and is a fifty percent standard on the brick of the building. The, the backs of the building, because of the grade and because of where they face, they hardly ever be seen the backs of these buildings. So we would rather not have that additional cost, so we can make sure that the project can go forward. From a financing standpoint, brick is quite expensive, and if folks aren't going to see it, then that seems like something that might be a little more of a luxury than we can afford when we're trying to do a project that keeps the rents down at a low point for the residents that, that live there in the future. On number two, generally, we don't have any problem with that. Typically, what we have, that sleeve that you see on those is a painted sleeve, but it is a powder-coated painting. What we just didn't want to do is come and apply another color of paint, because that will not look good after five to ten years when it starts to flake. So we will match that. It will be an earth tone. We will match it. It won't be raw metal. That wouldn't look good, so we will have some color there, and it'll be a finish on there, and it'll be something that integrates into the colors that we use in the building. I also wanted to mention that I've got my design team. We've got Scott Snyder with Simonson and Associates on. We've got Doug Saltgaver with Engineering Resource Group, and also Brett Mills, who is the president of Conlon Properties. So fire away with any questions you've got, and, and we'll be happy to answer those.
Thank you, JB. Now, are there any people present this evening who would like to speak in opposition to this request? And you have five minutes. Do you see any hands raised?
I am not seeing any.
Okay, then we'll go on. If there are any speakers who would like to be in support or neutral to this request.
I'm not seeing any there either.
Okay. Do we have any questions for staff commissioners? Well, since we don't seem to have any further questions, and there is nothing or a rebuttal for the applicant to address, we will close the public hearing and ask the commissioners to discuss this item.
And again, I would just reiterate that the applicant was against condition number one, and the wording of condition number two just have it say be colored to match the building rather than painted.
Madam Chair, this is Johnny Alsobar. I have a question, just for clarification. The applicant mentioned that they will comply with the IFA requirements for stone and brick in the facades. Was that requirement fifty percent? Did I hear that correctly?
I would have to defer to the applicant on that. It looks like he has his hand raised, so. He should be able to unmute himself now.
Yes, it is fifty percent. They, they want to see fifty percent of the building as, as stone or masonry, and, and you can see from the building, we use a lot of different variations out there. We've got a lot of different stone and brick and, and whatnot, but they don't require it being a very specific place. So we, we get to choose where that fifty percent is.
Madam Chair, this is Greg Watier, had a question for Bert.
Here.
Bert, is your request for item number one such that it would then match the existing buildings there? Or is your request, would it be different than the existing buildings?
It would be to generally match the existing buildings. The existing buildings that are there are readily visible on all four sides, because there's parking lots on, generally on both sides of the buildings. So yeah, so our recommendation would be that they have the same architecture on all four facades.
Thank you.
There any other discussion?
Dory, this is Greg Jones. I'm, I mean, I like the, the facade that has the more brick on it, but I understand their point of view about the fifty percent brick. Even though I would leave it alone, maybe they could move some of that brick to the back, so it doesn't come out to be two-thirds, but there's a little more, and they could lose a little bit on the front side, and still have the fifty percent overall. I'm not sure how much that does. I somewhat buy their argument that it's kind of far away from other stuff, and the back doesn't really need it, but if staff really has heartburn about it, that may be a way to, to get us there.
Today, this is Jason Van Assen, the planning staff, but I, if I could, I'd like to jump in on that, Greg. I think some of, as we discussed this, some of our thought processes, you know, we were looking for consistency, that three sixty architecture. They've done a great job with the buildings they have. And so we were, you know, wanting to kind of carry that forward. But I do think that one thing that we weren't aware of as we were developing our staff recommendation was the, the grade grading that they're going to do onsite. JB can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that they're going to be cutting into the grade. So when you looked at some of those pictures that Bert showed, it looked more gradual and more exposed to the neighbors, to the east. And, and this information that they provided here for the meeting appears that they're going to have to be cutting into that and installing a retaining wall. So I, I do think that lessens our angst as staff.
Thank you, Jason.
Yep.
There any further discussion, commissioners?
Dory, this is Rocky. I, I would have, I don't know if I'm going to make a motion yet, but I, I would be, I think the applicant's rationale is pretty solid, and I would be in support of a motion that strikes one and rewards two. Thank you.
Thank you, Rocky.
Dory, this is Greg Jones, so moved.
Okay.
Rocky didn't want to make a motion, so I'll turn it into one.
Thank you, Greg.
Thanks, Greg.
All right, Dory Bryles?
Yes.
Jan Fried?
Yes.
Caleb Burksen?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jensen?
Yes.
Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Greg Watier?
Yes.
Greg Jones?
Yes.
Abby Chunga?
Yes.
Rocky Spazato?
Yes.
Will Page?
Yes.
Johnny Alsobar?
Yes.
And Emily Webb?
Yes.
That motion carries fourteen zero.
Thank you, Tyler. We're now ready for item number six, which is a request from RM Madden Construction, represented by Michael Madden for review and approval of a public hearing site plan for property located at one four seven East Marion Street to allow construction of a new house type B in an N three A neighborhood district. And I believe Eric is going to be presenting.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Catherine Drehouse, planner for the city of Des Moines. Eric and I did a little switching around this afternoon, Dory.
Okay, great.
So as mentioned, this is a residential review that is coming to you for a few different reasons. They are looking to waive a few requirements that were denied type ones, and then a few other requirements that are beyond the purview of the administrative review of staff. This property is located on a corner, which, as you might recall from some other presentations, can be, can add a little bit of a tricky element to residential reviews. This is at the corner of East Marion Street and Southeast Second Street. Here are a couple of site photos, providing you with some context. You'll see the site that we're talking about here, and then the other sites around it. Let's see. Again, just a little bit of context, some additional parcels in the immediate vicinity of our subject property. And then the applicant did provide us with the site plan. They are looking to build new construction. They are including a attached garage. Forgive me, I'll have to double-check the square footage that they're, they're proposing, but they are above our requirement of two hundred and eighty-eight square feet for the proposed garage. They, I've got some, to be honest, I think I have forgotten to put in the renderings, so I might ask Jason or Eric to see if they can grab those really quickly. So we'll get through this as best we can until I can get you a little bit more information. So they are looking to not provide the transparency on the the side facade that would be facing Southeast Second. And they are looking to waive the requirement for the public sidewalk along both street frontages, and there is one site tree, but they are, that's pre-existing, and then they'd like to waive the requirement for the other four that are required on this corner lot. And then they are looking to also utilize vinyl, where we generally don't allow it as a major facade material. So we've reviewed this, and as you know, we always just really appreciate when garages are added, and I'm sure no one can complain about an attached garage. But in this case, this is a house type B in this particular neighborhood zoning, and, or excuse me, house type D, and that does require that the garage door be located on the side or the rear facade of the house, and they are proposing it on the front street-facing primary facade of the house. And so that's kind of where we get into a little bit of a conundrum. So we are, of course, also looking for that transparency on both sides, because that curb appeal and also just that visibility along any facade of a dwelling that's located along a street facade, it, it's within character of the neighborhood to ensure that we have those elements there. So we are looking to deny the requested type-two design alternatives for the transparency requirement. We would support a type-one design alternative for a lower amount of transparency that would be equivalent to eight point four percent on the east side of the house. And that comes out to two, twenty-two point five square feet of transparency, or the equivalent of a five foot by four and a half foot window. And then we are, excuse me, we are denying the requested type-two alternative to waive the street tree requirements. We do feel that the street tree and contributing to the site canopy, as well as the overall city canopy, is a very important part of new construction. We are recommending denial of the request to waive the sidewalks. We feel that it's practical to provide the sidewalks, and that it's important to go ahead and close the gaps on the city sidewalk network, which this is also a priority of Move DSM. And then we are recommending denial of the type-two request to waive the vinyl. Excuse me, let me rephrase that. We are recommending denial of the request to utilize vinyl as a major material. Again, this is just something that we are doing to ensure character of the neighborhood. And then I know the, there's been an ongoing conversation about sidewalks within residential and new construction, and I'll just go back up to the site photos so you can see the, the property again. We are trying to close that gap, and we know there's ongoing consideration. Staff did discuss the proposed sidewalk committee, and there just has not been the opportunity to fully go through that conversation yet. So that is something that I know has been discussed before, but we're not at a point where we have a, an operable solution on that yet. Our notification area, just so you have that for your reference, staff did create a map that kind of takes away some of the extra layers, so that if we need to, we can zoom in and see the sidewalk in the, a little bit better. And then either I or Kyle Larson would be happy to answer any questions you might have for staff at this time.
Catherine, I have the elevations if, if you want me to share those quickly.
Yes, please. Thank you, Eric.
Can everybody see those on the commission?
Yes.
Okay. This is the front facade, so the left, the left side elevation is the one in question, I guess, in this case, which would be the west, or the east, the east side on the, on the other street-facing side.
Catherine, this is Will Page. I have a question, please.
Yes.
I'm looking at the aerial shot that we got in our packet, and I really, my question is, are there any other sidewalks in the immediate neighborhood?
Let's see, hopefully my screen is back up. So we did remove the parcel boundaries on this map so that we could look at walks a little bit more closely, and I would just, I'll do the best I can, but it looks like we have a pretty complete one along East Watchress, which is a block to the north. And then it looks like East Leach Street has sidewalk on both the north and south facades pretty continuously as well. And then over, let's see, I guess Marion doesn't go, doesn't look like East Marion goes all the way through, but you will see that it is over to the east on East Marion. It looks like there's sidewalk on the north and south there. And then kind of in that immediate block vicinity, I don't see much. There's a few, maybe a small piece here, possibly a piece here. And if you'd like me to zoom in, I can do that.
No, thanks, that helps. It looks like when the plat was laid out and developed, that partial, I mean, that portion of the area was lacked sidewalks. You've answered my question, thanks, Catherine.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions for staff?
Yeah, this is Greg Watier. Can, I'm looking at the homes around there. Can you tell me more about the materials, existing materials on homes around there? I can't really tell what's their siding, what's...
I'll bring up the site photos, and I might let Kyle jump in and discuss the, his impressions of the siding materials that he noticed. He's the one who took the site photos this time around.
Members of the commission, this is Kyle Larson, planner at the city of Des Moines. To the best of my observation, when out at the site, there was a mix of siding materials, including the fiber cement siding and vinyl siding. So there wasn't a real consistent pattern of the siding. Many of the homes in the area, as you can see, have been built for some time. They're older housing stock for the most part, so you can imagine they've been recited as maintenance has been needed over the years.
I guess I'd have another question for staff then. So what's the desire in the code and staff to require the extra materials are requiring or not allowing when, when that, when those materials are in the neighborhood?
Good question. Generally, we're looking for durability of the materials and to ease the long-term cost of homeownership and maintenance, and I would welcome Jason or Eric to...
Yeah, this is, this is Jason Van Assen, staff. Catherine, just to help clarify, the, which house type again is this?
House type D.
House type D, and the major materials chart allows vinyl, but you have to have, you have to have 60% stone on the front, is that, or is that a different house type?
Would it be in the staff rec? I'm sorry, Jason.
Yeah, could you go to the opening slide so I can see the write-up, please? Kyle, are you still available?
Yes.
Can you clarify for the group, is this a situation, the materials chart, the primary or major materials chart allows vinyl for house types, but you can only, on the front facade, you have to have, you can't have more than 65%? Is that the applicable section in this case?
Yes, it is. So it's, it's Article IV that's applicable here to any house type.
Right, and so that is the major materials chart. And so I, what I want to do is clarify that, that the applicant is asking to do 100% vinyl on the front facade, and that's the issue, is that correct?
That's correct, Jason.
Okay, so it's not, the issue before the commission is not that the house can't be sited in vinyl. The issue is that the code requires 65% of the front facade to be stone or masonry material. Thank you, Jason, I helped. Yep, you're welcome.
This is Eric again. And further, the option is, there's architectural options that are there to allow the vinyl to be 100%, so that's that 4.3.11 that's referenced in the, in the agenda item.
And that includes providing a porch of a, was it 60 square foot, Eric?
Yeah.
That'd be one way to get out of, is there, what are the other?
Appropriate size and number of gables defined by accent shake or similar architectural elements, appropriate size and design of finished columns, and then there's a, more of a generic or other appropriate change in articulation or pattern of materials. So at the administrative level, I believe that was...
And, and just to, so to come back to that, there are a couple paths in the code to use vinyl. One would be to provide the stone or brick material on the front. The other would be to provide a porch or some other architectural elements, and in this case, we didn't feel that we were getting there with the applicant on, on this particular design. Hopefully that helps the commission sort through this.
Thanks very much, staff. Are there any other questions from the commission? If not, we'd welcome the applicant to do their presentation with a 10-minute limit. Is the applicant ready to speak?
I am, yep. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Michael Madden. Address 2504 48th Place, Des Moines, 50310. Quick clarification, this zoning is N3A, which allows house type B, which is what I submitted for. So I don't know if you were looking up rules for house type D that were different, but just wanted to clarify that. Okay, there we go. So I guess I'll go in order, transparency being the first issue. The house plan with the elevations that you guys pulled up were, must have been the most recent ones you had received, but I had made some edits and maybe then to get passed along, but I'm proposing to put a 5040 window, so a five-foot wide, four-foot tall foot window on the street side facing Southeast Second, which is 20 square feet right alongside that, you know, real close to that type-one exception there. So hopefully that is allowable, you know, with every little window in a neighborhood like this, there's, there's costs involved. Next issue, the street tree issue. There is a large tree on the corner there on East Marion and Southeast Second that we trimmed up, just to allow room for the house. It's pretty big, very large. And then in that picture you're showing, there's that pine tree along the street there that's also on our property. So right now, what I have proposed is a street tree along East Marion in the front yard, not in the parking, due to the fact, solely just because of grade. And then along Southeast Second, we're going to have the overhead power come in, about 10 feet to the north of the driveway, or sorry, south of the driveway. So we want to make sure there's enough clearance and no trees growing up into that overhead service. That was kind of my rationale for not doing another street tree along there. And then, moving on, sidewalk issue. In my rationale, I attached a picture, but you guys have it in your pictures, yep, the one down, yep, there we go. So that is along East Marion. You know, unfortunately, we, we can't really make that grade work with the sidewalk, which is likely why there is no sidewalk along that whole, whole entire street. This, this house plan is a tuck-under garage, so we're going to raise the elevation in the front yard and create a retaining wall along the driveway. So this elevation is only going to get worse. So along, along Southeast Second, or along East Marion, it's, it is pretty difficult to put a sidewalk in. There's some extreme costs of doing so. About $2,500 in, in concrete just for along Southeast, or East Marion, and then if we had to build a retaining wall to create that sidewalk, nearly another $5,000 to $6,000, which is a pretty crazy cost for something that just gets passed right along to the home buyer. You know, that prices a lot of people out of this house in, in this neighborhood. With it being infill, there's, the average house along that street, closest 15 properties, the assessed building value is $89,000. So our biggest goal is to make, obviously, a house fit in there functionally, and that's why we're doing the tuck-under garage, but also to make it affordable. And some of these issues are making that more and more difficult. So even if we did put a sidewalk along Southeast Second, which is a little bit more flat, that's another $3,000 in costs in sidewalk that's passed on directly to the homeowner. We'll move on to the vinyl siding issue. I did make some architectural changes to this plan, doing a 60-square-foot front deck and a 20-foot wide gable with vertical siding in that gable. If you could please go down to the picture, that is, this is the exact same plan that we built at 907 McKinley, corner of Southwest Ninth and McKinley right there. As you can see, we have, you know, a painted foundation, a stone retaining wall, the gable with the vertical siding. These are all some pretty, I, I like to think they're, they're great architectural elements for houses and infill lots in these price ranges. That should satisfy vinyl siding. And our main argument for vinyl siding is, you know, you don't have to repaint it. There's very easy maintenance. You go out there every other year and power wash it, it looks good as new. Number of reasons, really, but it also keeps the house affordable, which in infill is one of our biggest concerns. So I guess I'd like to open it up to questions, if anybody has any.
Commissioners, are there any questions for the applicant at this time? If not, we'd like to invite any speakers that are in support of this request. You see any hands?
Madam Chair, there's two individuals that are, raised their hands, Rick Madden and JB Tomlin.
Great.
Go ahead, Rick, we've given you the ability to unmute yourself. Are you there, Rick?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Sorry about that. Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name's Rick Madden, Madden Construction, 5909 Grand Avenue in Des Moines. I'd just like to start by saying I appreciate all the hard work and time that you put in to make Des Moines such a better place to, to live and work. And we're very proud to be a part of it. Mike did a good job explaining to you a lot of the points, but I'd like to just hit a couple more. The house we're proposing will no doubt be a huge asset to that neighborhood. Its assessed value, as we propose, will be much higher than the surrounding houses. You know, we're trying to help the city of Des Moines grow and give buyers houses that are affordable and make sense, and our company's been building in the city of Des Moines for over 80 years. And we're building what we know buyers want, and, and they're seeking out in the city of Des Moines. And we let the market dictate what we can build on certain lots, always trying to maximize potential, but also we try and keep in an adequate price point. And it has to be a price point that makes sense to us as the builder who's taking the risk. It's a price point that also has to make sense to an appraiser, who has to believe it's worth the money sitting in that neighborhood, and then obviously it has to make sense to the buyers. And the buyers who are most likely on what we build in these infills, they're going to own the most expensive house in the neighborhood. So it has to check these boxes, or these houses just aren't going to get built. And, and all these are infill housing criteria that need to be met. Now, the infill issues are a lot different than the greenfield developments that we all, that have all the comps in the same neighborhood and can easily, easily be justified. And I tell you, I am still, I'm very troubled that the city has adopted a zoning code that is so restrictive that we find ourselves having to seek relief on 80% of our infill builds. It's very time-consuming, it's costly, it puts delays in our start time, and I don't believe this is uncommon with other builders who are also trying to focus on some infill lots in the city. We came a long ways working together on this code, but I believe we still need to make some serious changes on what the city has called a living document, and make changes that continue to get infill growth and continue to bring housing to the city of Des Moines. So I just, I hope you all keep that in mind when you're discussing this and making your votes. It's passionate to us, we've been doing it a long time, and we just getting kind of tired of, of... of tired of, of what we're having to deal with and all this. So I just, I just wanted to share my concern with you. So thank you, and I'll take any questions if you have them.
There are no questions. Is there another speaker who wishes to speak in favor of the request?
Go ahead, JB.
Thanks. I just wanted to comment on this for the same reasons on, on the last item, it comes down to, to costs. I can, you know, I can personally speak for what the Madden family has been doing in Des Moines. I sold a house of theirs back in, oh, I can't even remember how long ago it was, but it was to a young family that was a very similar house to this in the Frisbee Park neighborhood after the devastating floods. And they were just tibble pink to get it, and it was, it was affordable to them. And so they're still doing the same thing, and I would just implore the, the P and Z to make that connection between where it's being built. This is a good-looking house to me, and, and you can't have all the bells and whistles and everything in every single house and still make it affordable. So I would, I, I just, I, I would parrot a lot of things that, that Rick said. Thank you.
JB, could you give your name and address for the record, please?
JB Conlin, thirty-seven twenty-one Southwest Sixty-first Street in Des Moines.
Dory, I believe those were the only two that wanted to speak in support.
Dory, you're muted.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the request? If not, are there commissioners, do you have any other requests for city staff at this time?
Dory, would it be okay if I just make a comment? This is Jason with staff.
Absolutely.
Could whoever's running the slides go to the, go to the opening slide again with the list of the items? I would like to, I don't know that we fully understood that the proposal was to match that photograph. I, I'd like to have the commission focus more on the, the trees, whether or not to do the street trees, the question of the public walk, and then with it being a corner lot, whether or not that, or the transparency requirement's important or not. I, I think that, you know, we've crossed the bridge on, on that design, worked with them on that other one, and if their, if their intent is to duplicate that, I think that staff can support D. We can, I would just ask that you make your motion subject to matching that character example. Hopefully that helps the commission focus down.
Thank you, Jason. Well, at this time, we'll close the public hearing. And commissioners, what is your discussion of the questions, comments?
Dory, it's Will Page here. I, I'd like to comment on the sidewalk issue. I am sympathetic with the problem on the grade along the east-west portion of the, the street, Marion, I guess it is. And I see no other examples of sidewalks in the immediate area. And we are in a difficult position because we have regulations that encourage sidewalks, and yet the practical implementation of them is really tough. And in this instance, I think it's appropriate, quite frankly, to waive the sidewalk requirements in this instance.
Thank you, Will. Is there any, any other comments or discussion?
Dory, this is Greg Jones. I believe I heard that on part A, they were proposing a twenty-square-foot window instead of a twenty-two and a half, and I think that's good enough. On part B, I would not like to waive the street trees. And on part C, I'll agree with half of Will. I think they could easily put the sidewalk on, on second, but I'd waive it on Marion. And on part D, I think what they, the house they built elsewhere was just fine, so I agree that we should allow that here. It's not yet a motion, but it could be.
Thanks, Greg.
Dory, this is Jan Fried. I would support what Greg just shared.
Me, me, this is Greg Watier, B as well, Greg, I, I think you had to make a motion.
So moved.
I don't want to steal your thunder, man.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there any further discussion?
Sorry, Dory, I'm a little confused on who made that motion.
Uh, Greg.
Greg Jones.
Greg Jones. All right, thank you.
And, and just to clarify, so Greg is, his motion is to grant A to, on B, to require the sidewalk on which one of the streets?
No, no on A. They need to provide the one window, Jason. It's not waiving the whole thing, right, Mr. Jones?
Well, I, I think you were approving what they proposed, right?
Right. Yeah, A subject to the window, which still won't meet, which still won't meet the twelve percent.
And then could you just clarify, Greg Jones, which side, street you wanted to lock on? So I just want to make sure we have the record correct.
No sidewalk on Marion, yes on second.
Thank you.
Hey, commissioners, are you ready for a vote?
Right, Jan Fried?
Yes.
Caleb Burksen?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jenison?
Yes.
Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Greg Watier?
Yes.
Greg Jones?
Yes.
Abby Shungus?
Yes.
Rocky Spazato?
Yes.
Will Page?
Yes.
Johnny Astovar?
Yes.
Emily Webb?
Yes.
And Dory Bryles?
Yes.
The motion carries fourteen zero.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we are ready for item number seven, which is request from Nicholas Van Patton for review and approval of a public hearing site plan for a type-two design alternative for property located at six zero two zero McKinley Avenue. And I believe Eric is going to do the presentation.
Yes, Madam Chair, Eric Lundey with Planning Staff. Move quickly here to the location. You might be somewhat familiar with it based on it's being directly south of the Waldinger Headquarters project that's now in, in place. This aerial photo was taken last spring, early summer, so that was still under construction, what you see there. But now southwest McKinley Avenue swings through here. There is a frontage road serving the three parcels with homes to the west of this property, but the, there's a barricade here, so that all feeds in through this other connection here. The subject property at sixty-twenty McKinley has a driveway onto the new alignment here. So this actual portion has been removed, and so now there's a lot of right-of-way here. I think there's some plan by the owner to request some of that be vacated so that it can be incorporated into their site or into their property. And there is no, when this got built, there was no construction of a sidewalk on the south side. Waldinger did put a sidewalk on their side. This is, and of course, this was after the snow, so you're looking at the end of that former piece of McKinley that's now the, the frontage system to serve those three homes to the west. So that has been taken out here in front of the applicant's house. This is their front yard over here on the right, looking a little bit more directly to the southeast. Pulling back, and that is the house, they've already had one garage addition approved. They're now proposing a addition, a further addition, which is triggering this full compliance with our chapter one thirty-five requirements. This is a quick shot at the site being proposed. So you can see it's very significant improvements made to the home as of late and being proposed. What's in question here is whether sidewalks should be incorporated along the south side of McKinley in front of this property. And that's being triggered again by the, by the amount of investment and square footage being done by the applicant with this project.
Eric, this is Dory.
Yes.
Could you show where the applicant would be required to place the sidewalk?
Yeah, I'll go back to.
Yeah, thank you.
So again, as I was showing you this alignment here, so he would be obligated to put a strip on that south side.
Okay.
Basically along the south curb line of the new street here. Now, you know, you could analyze this and say, so then what would these individuals do at some point? So the question is whether it makes more sense to have something right here. There's no street right here, so if we were picking up sidewalk coming off the south side of McKinley, let's say down the road someday, would it be better to come through here and, and swing up, you know, to connect over here? I don't know the answer to that. This is an unusual right-of-way situation. The immediate is that, that, that would have been expected to be along the south side of McKinley within the frontage of this property.
Thank you.
Eric, Dory, this is Greg Jones. Can I ask Eric a question?
Sure.
It goes right along with your question. Who's ever going to put the sidewalk along the new alignment of southwest McKinley? Surely we're not going to ask the property owners there to do it. How is it ever going to get there unless the city does it? Or why didn't we get it put in when the street got put in?
Well, that's a good question. I guess that would have been something that came up at the plat stage.
Seems like we missed the ball.
Yeah, possibly in that case, because certainly moved DSM was in place when the Waldinger project was under consideration, and I don't, I can't speak to the negotiations with it doing the public project. But certainly it was part of the package that they were providing. They did end up, as you recall, providing the, the trail connection along their twenty-eighth street, or Iowa twenty-eighth side of the campus, so, and they put it on their side of the street. So I don't know if, since the city was also participating in the construction of that street piece, if that was something that was not considered when the city did the public improvement project. I can't speak to that without getting more, doing more research on that. Yeah, getting back to the recommendation, I think staff's taking the, the same tact on that, the sidewalk, you know, we're trying to further move DSM and the transportation plan by getting compliance when we have significant investment projects on private property. So at this time, until the policy has changed or something is, you know, done differently on how we treat maybe house types versus commercial projects, this is where we're at, and we're, we're taking a consistent approach. I can tell you that some, you know, there are, you don't see every project, many projects comply and don't, don't make a request for, for type-two design alternatives. So, you know, the commission only see the, sees the ones that are appealing that provision. We didn't get any written opposite, opposition or, or support. In fact, I don't recall any contact from anybody with any questions about this item. I do believe Andrew Roland I saw listed here on, that is the contractor for the applicant.
Hey, Eric, this is Rocky. Eric, you there?
Yes.
So just for clarification, we could potentially be asking the homeowner to put a sidewalk in that wouldn't align with a future sidewalk network once we get there?
I think that the commission could certainly make some recommendations on that. Right now, the, it would go along the south side of the, the street, the improved street that's in front of the house. So I, yeah, I see your concern, and I, you know, that was one of the things I pointed out. So if there's the thought that incrementally over time, it's going to make more sense to stay in line with the old McKinley, certainly that could, you know, you could ask for that. It's still in the right-of-way, so the placement within the right-of-way would be more along the, the, the old alignment of McKinley. Now, what that's going to do is sort of bifurcate that, that front yard. I think that there was originally plans to sort of incorporate that, vacate some of that and, and bring the right-of-way up more to conform with the new street alignment. But yes, there is some question about what would make the most sense there.
If the commissioners have no more questions, is the applicant present to give their presentation?
I see Russ Bitterman from ID eight Architects. ID eight's also the, the, the project architect, so looks like Russ is wanting to speak on behalf of the applicant.
Great, thank you.
Russ, if you'd go ahead and unmute yourself, thank you.
Yep, I'm good, thank you. Madam Chairman and members of the council, or commission, you know, this is, obviously it's a little bit of a strange situation, as Eric was pointing out, where we don't even know where the right-of-way is going to be located at this point. My understanding from the client is they're in the works on taking half of, of, part of the right-of-way as part of their land, but that, that's still in process. The main items that I want to, want to go over, I've already heard some of the same things from the previous one, but this is a little bit different. So we're asking for a single type-two design alternative that doesn't have any substantial or undue adverse effect on the neighboring properties. adverse effect on the neighboring properties. There, the properties around this, there are three residential units or residential lots to the west and there are seven to the east before you get into farmland. I know that will probably develop sometime in the future, but 50% of the developed lots around here don't have sidewalks. I mean, Waldinger put one in as part of their project, but it's out there quite a ways from my client's site. The other item is, you know, we talk about closing gaps and I understand that if there was a gap to close, but I think that adding a sidewalk would only create gaps. And the usability would be useless because it would go nowhere. It would require maintenance by my client. It's a cost burden. And then there is still a sidewalk on the north side. And we already talked about where, where this should be located if it was required to be put in. Want to remind everyone that this is a residential lot. It's not a commercial lot. And, you know, my, my client has already put a lot of money into his house addition for a new garage. He's interested in making it even better and the sidewalk issue is blocking, building permit for that. Are we really going to risk homeowners' investment in their property over an $8,000 sidewalk that goes nowhere? It's not practical or even desirable, I would argue, in the neighborhood. And my client is amenable to talking about this in the future. I know that it makes more sense when you have a hammer about having a building permit being held up. But if the adjoining areas change or they end up adding sidewalks, that's certainly something that could be brought back to the client. So again, it's a, it's a residential lot. I'm not sure what the right of way answer is on it. But we would sincerely hope that this type two design alternative is approved. Thank you. I'll take any questions.
Russ, can you give your name and address for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. Russ Bitterman, ID8 Architects, 1440 Locust Street, Suite 100, Des Moines, Iowa, 50309.
Are there any other people to speak in support of this request?
Madam Chair, I see George Davis, the president of Southwestern Hills.
Okay, great. George, are you ready to speak?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Madam Chairman, Commission Members, George Davis, President, Southwestern Hills Neighborhood Association. My personal address is 3124 Southwest 29th, Des Moines, Iowa. Our Southwestern Hills Board has looked at this situation and we are fully supporting not adding the sidewalk because the sidewalk just would go in front of Mr. Van Patten's property and there would be no alignment to the west or to the east of a sidewalk. In fact, that would be the only sidewalk there in front of his property for, I think, if my measurements are right, almost a one block area to the west and a two block area to the east where there are absolutely no sidewalks. I think Waldinger put theirs in because our neighborhood association was involved in that. They put their sidewalk in on the north side of the street to meet requirements. And then with the possible hookup to a bike trail or other walking situations. But at this time, we support Mr. Van Patten's request not to put in a sidewalk. Thank you. Questions?
Uh, thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Are there any other individuals who would like to speak in support of the request?
Madam Chair, I don't see any further requests to speak.
Thanks, Eric. Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to the request? Any hands out there?
I don't see any, any responses to that either.
Okay, and anyone who's neutral or just like to comment, please raise your hand. Well, if there are.
I don't see anything, yeah.
Okay, thanks, Eric. If there are none, do we have any further questions for city staff? Okay, and since we had no people that spoke in opposition, the applicant, would you like any other time to share any other comments before we close the public hearing? No hands up there?
I don't see the applicant raising their hand, so.
Okay, we will now close the public hearing. And Commissioner, what is your preference?
This is Francis Bogus speaking and my position has been consistently to, where practicable, grant these waivers until we have a coherent process to add sidewalks where they're needed and feasible. So that's my position and I would be in favor of granting the waiver.
Thank you.
I don't see any other commissioners raising their hands. I don't know if Francis wants to make that into a motion.
I'll make a motion. We grant the waiver for the applicant.
Thank you, Francis.
All right, Caleb Burksen?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jensen?
Yes.
Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Thank you. Greg Watier?
Yes.
Greg Jones?
Yes.
Abby Chungith?
Yes.
Rocky Spazado?
Yes.
Will Page?
Yes.
Johnny Alcevar?
No.
Emily Webb?
Yes.
Dory Brials?
Yes.
And Jan Fried?
Yes.
Motion carries 13-1.
Thank you, Tyler. We're now ready, we're now, thank you. We're now ready for agenda item number eight, a request from Orlando Dominguez.
Madam Chair, this is Eric Lundey. Catherine is going to present this one as well.
Okay, great. For review and approval of a public hearing site plan for property located at 2925 Fourth Street.
Madam Chair, oh, sorry.
No, thank you, Catherine.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Catherine Drehouse with planning again. As mentioned, this applicant is building a addition onto the front of their house. Their property is located on Fourth Street, which in this case is located a few blocks north of North High School and then in between Second and Sixth Avenues. To give you a bit of context, we have some site photos. The house in question is, hopefully you can see the little box I've placed on the screen, but it is that gray house, which looks like there's a red door behind it. And then a little bit closer. And then heading down the street south and now we're on the opposite side of Fourth Street heading, whoops, excuse me, heading back north. And that just gives you a bit of context of where we're located and the street we're on. You could see it was a pretty mature neighborhood, mature street trees, smaller properties that allow for greater walkability, but result in smaller front property lines and smaller property lists. The applicant is proposing a addition to the front of the house and the main obstacle we're running into on this one is that it will result in a much closer front setback as a result. They provided us with a couple of renders showing the new addition kind of in this area and side view. This would be looking from the north at the house, from the south. And you can see the addition, they are putting a nice gable on this addition, which we appreciate. And then a front perspective. So the applicant's proposal would put the front, the proposed front setback at 11 feet from that front property line. And this is 10 feet more than the required minimum 24, 21 foot setback. We are, we do feel that that is not within context of the neighborhood. You did see that it's a bit of a tighter neighborhood. So we're dealing with some, some issues there in terms of frontage. But we are recommending the 30% reduction, which would get it to a 14.7 foot front setback from the front property line. And then staff did pull together this rough diagram. So you can see that the purple line represents both the front setback as it exists for the property and generally the average setback of most of the properties here. The orange line would be where the applicant approximately is proposing to extend on their property. And then the blue line shows where staff is, approximately where staff recommendation would land. And then the notification area for this property. As you can see, we didn't receive any communication back from the impacted neighbors. And then I'd be more than happy to answer any questions or Kyle could as well that the commission might have for staff.
Catherine, this is Dory. I don't have a question, but I do appreciate the, showing the colored lines to show the various options.
Thank you.
Any other, any questions for staff? If not, we'll have the applicant present. You have 10 minutes.
Let's see, and Mr. Dominguez is on the call. And he has been allowed to unmute, but he will need to unmute himself.
Madam Chairman and members of the council, thanks for your time in considering this permission to build this addition to my house. We were looking at this from the perspective of trying to have a larger place for our family. Back when my girls were three and six, where everybody fitted really good inside the house and there wasn't any problems. But now they're 13 and 17 and we have them here at the house taking school at home. And at the beginning of all this stuff, we had them there in the basement where there's no windows and they were feeling kind of depressed a little bit, but now we have them upstairs where there's windows and, and lights and stuff and, and it's, it's a little tight, but they're feeling a little bit better. So that's what we came up with, trying to build something in front. Mr. Kyle told me that maybe it was going to be kind of hard to get into the 15 feet. But he said, maybe we can try and see what the commission thought about it. We appreciate your time and I mean, whatever the decision you guys make, I'll respect that. It was just for the, the room and the area, you know, and tried to extend it a little more so we can have a better living area and assigned area for the girls too, which planning on having their own rooms and their privacy there too as well. I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Dominguez. Do we have any speakers in support of the request?
I see any raised hands.
Are there any speakers in opposition to the requests this evening?
None of those either.
Okay, if there's no further audience participation, commissioners, do you have any questions for city staff? Well, if there are none, we will close the public hearing and ask commissioners what their thoughts are.
This is Greg Watier. Do you have one question for staff? Sorry, so if I understand the site plan correctly, staff, are you recommending that the 11 foot setback becomes 14.7?
Yes, that would be correct. So currently the proposal shows an 11 foot setback from the front property line and I don't.
So we'd have about an 11.5, if my math's right, wide addition times 28 feet. My math's right.
Let me see, I might have Kyle jump in on that one. Looks like they're proposing 15 foot depth on the addition.
Right, so minus 3.7.
He's saying to go to the type one level.
That's correct. They would have to reduce the size of the, the addition back 3.7 feet to get that type one threshold for design alternative relief.
Thank you.
This is Will Page. Would that setback, how would that setback affect the roof over the stoop porch?
We might need the applicant to.
If I could, this is Jason. I think it would just shorten up the, the extension so that porched area would be just not quite as deep. And I just want to also offer too, you know, we were trying to find a kind of happy medium between facilitating their project, but also respecting the, the other, you know, kind of the established setback for houses in the area. So this didn't stand, stand so far forward that it was out of place. There is also the opportunity, although he has a patio, there is space that if he did need a larger addition, there is room in the backyard as well. But we were just trying to find that happy medium.
Madam Chair, it's Will Page again. I would move the staff alternate setback suggestion with a design to be approved by the planning administrator.
Thank you, Will. Is there any discussion in the motion? If there's no further discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jensen?
Yes.
Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Greg Watier?
Yes.
Greg Jones?
Yes.
Abby Chungith?
Yes.
Rocky Spazado?
Yes.
Will Page?
Yes.
Johnny Alcevar?
Yes.
Emily Webb?
Yes.
Dory Brials?
Yes.
Yes.
Jan Fried?
Yes.
And Kayla Burksen?
Yes.
Motion carries 14-0.
Thank you, Tyler. We're ready for item number nine, which is a request from Casey's Marketing Company, represented by Eric Nickel for review and approval of a public hearing site plan for a Casey's general store at 3121 Forest Avenue. And I believe Eric is presenting.
Yes, Madam Chair, Eric Lindy with the city planning staff. There are six items here that I'll focus on. You're probably familiar from the process of a proposal here to put a non-gas station, retail store in the Drake neighborhood. At the corner, Forest Avenue and 32nd Street. This is currently an old gas station that's become a repair shop, auto repair shop. But they would redevelop the entire site. This is as it stands currently. I think gasoline has been gone for a number of years from this location. This is looking up 32nd Street. Back down Forest towards the east. This is looking up the north-south alley. And that'll come into play here in a second when I talk about it. And then this is looking back to the west. So you can see the Neighborhood Development Corporation project to the west. Serving as housing for the Drake neighborhood. You should have received this, most of this in your packet. I'm going to kind of jump to the page that's most relevant here. So the, the first piece of this is the, is the width of the building. So in the commercial cottage building type, there's a maximum width. This store, because of the depth of the site and to get double loaded parking here, rather than build a more square store that pushes out to the north and, and stays within the width along Forest, that it would be intended for the commercial cottage type, they are compressing it or sort of pushing everything more towards Forest, which widens the building. Staff doesn't have any issue with that and would recommend allowing the width of that. There's plenty of east-west dimension here to, to work with, to allow, to allow this to function and, and be a walkable entrance location along Forest. Then the second piece is the question of interior islands. So right now, there's supposed to be end caps. They've shown these areas here, but that should be a full end cap with a planter and here, that would facilitate getting down to the maximum percentage of impervious. Right now, the maximum impervious is set at 65% with a type one could be considered administratively up to 75%. They're, they're at 85%. So that throws it into the type two situation. Again, I think if we denied some of the interior landscaping requirements, I think if those were fulfilled, we would likely be not having to be concerned about the impervious situation. But right now it sits at a type two and would require the commission's approval. The other piece of this is the stormwater management. Initially, the engineering department indicated that if the impervious was kept at 75% or below, that they would, they would consider waiving stormwater management requirements, but they're not, since that's not being proposed, they're not allowing that. So I've added an item C that really is, only comes into play really if the commission is allowing the waiver of the impervious. So then as a second piece, you have to consider the waiver of the stormwater management. Now, since the time of the staff report in discussions with the engineering consultant for the applicant, it's understood that they are willing to provide stormwater management in accordance with what is acceptable to the city engineer. There isn't storm sewer directly available, but there, there's designs that can be done where release is done on site and doesn't become problematic. But there is still detention provided. So since the staff report, the applicant has really taken that off the table, but they still are seeking the impervious, impervious condition. Then there's the end caps here. And then the interior planters, which are based on the total number of, or I'm sorry, there's a fence frontage perimeter along here on the south. So there's, those are the pieces here. You can see it's still a significant improvement to the site that, that currently exists. They're putting walkable, class A sidewalk along Forest Avenue, and that'll match up to what's to the west. This is the elevation of the store. You're seeing the west elevation towards 32nd Street and the elevation towards Forest. Now, there is a grade issue, so they weren't able to have their front door open right out onto grade with the sidewalk there. So they are having to ramp one side and, and have steps down off of a, a vestibule, but they're have, it's totally transparent, so you can see the front entrance through the vestibule. And this is the east side and the backside. So this would be the loading side that you saw from the alley. And then this would be the side entered from the parking. None of the, those elements are under consideration. They've already been approved basically for this design, but I did want to show that to you. Again, so part A, staff recommends approval of A. B, we do not recommend approval of, but you're probably going to hear some justifications for, they're still seeking that situation. C is really not relevant at this point. They're willing to provide stormwater management. And D, I forgot to touch on the drive access, I apologize. So there is an existing north-south alley. They're trying to build off of that going west. And the commercial cottage type doesn't allow a, a private drive access off of the primary frontage, which would be Forest Avenue. So they would be limited to this western driveway. So they're proposing to widen this out. I think, you know, and that alley is allowed to, to remain there. I think that the traffic was willing to consider some width of that based on a conventional two-way traffic width, but they're proposing this width. I think it, it relates to their, their loading function more than anything that, that they're going to make that argument. Traffic's analysis of this is that the site's going to be, be required to be served by smaller service vehicles anyway, based on the, the turning movements provided. But I'll let the applicant speak to that. So getting back to the staff recommendation here. So staff is recommending approval of part A. Staff recommends denial of the requested design alternatives in part B, D, E, and F. And I've described them there. And the, but should the commission deny the design alternative in part B, then staff would recommend approval of the, the design alternative in part C. That's really not, not relevant anymore because they're agreeing to provide stormwater management. And then that last statement is, is that speaks to that contingency as well. So that's really not in play at this point, but it's in the staff report at, at this time. I guess should they decide to change their decision on the stormwater management, that would be our recommendation. But, but I think you're going to hear from the applicant that that, that they're willing to work towards that. We did not receive any communications, either in favor or in opposition. Any, any questions of staff at this time before you open the hearing?
Hey Eric, this is Johnny. I have a question about the existing site. Is it 100% impervious right now?
Yeah, let me go back and see if I can find that. It's hard to tell with the snow, so I'm going to go back to their, as built. See if I can zoom in maybe one. There's a little bit of green, but yeah, essentially I think it's, you can see asphalt here. It's, it's almost, it's nearly 100%. Just to kind of give you a response to that as well, the policy is generally, once it's reconstructed, it starts out like it's new, like green grass. So when they remove all this asphalt and concrete to, to build this project, really they're obligated to meet, meet the requirements. But yes, the net result of what they're proposing to what's there now is, is a significant amount of impervious.
Eric, this is Abby. I just have a quick question. I read this staff report a couple of days ago and I can't seem to find it right now. Is there, was there any mention in there about the maximum and minimum parking requirements for this and where they're at?
Yeah, so they, they could, they're wanting to park it a little bit more. I think if they removed a couple of spaces, they would still be in compliance. So, yeah, I'll let them speak to that though. I think parking is, is paramount for them. But yes, I think we are, if they met the impervious and provided those interior pieces, I think we would, we would be able to let them park it at that. I think their preference is to get the spaces that they can.
Okay, thank you.
This is Dory. Are there any other questions for Eric?
Well, Eric, it's Greg. Refresh my memory, is there street parking in front of it right there or not?
There is, there is some limitation to the street parking on Forest during the afternoon commute time.
Can you, can you bring back up that?
Yeah, let me go to the, there's no
I know there's, I know there's some across the street.
Yeah, there's no, there's no parking on the east side of 32nd. So, but there is on the west side, but that may come into play with their truck movement too. So I'm going to zoom in on this a little bit. So you can see the parking allowed on the west side of 32nd Street. You're not seeing any parking on Forest at the moment, but you know, if you're familiar with, this is Jeff Rose right here. So there's parking allowed there, but not in the morning. There's also parking allowed here, but not in the, in the eve, you know, from four to six. So now, right now, there's not much in front of this site because they have the two existing driveways, the alley and, and another driveway that will go away, but they would gain some, they would gain some parking except during the commute times.
Thank you.
I believe Wally Pelz is here and I saw Abby Gilroy, who's represents the owner. So I think there's a few individuals that are on the call that can speak as, on behalf of the applicant or in support of the project.
Wally, go ahead.
Okay, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Wally Pelz, Pelz Design Services, 2323 Dixon Street, Des Moines, Iowa, 50316. I appreciate you taking a look at our project and I apologize for my coloring because I'm not very good at it, used to computers doing it, I just couldn't get it done in time. So forgive my crude drawing that's in front of you. But I did want to emphasize a couple of things on what's before you. So we've been working really hard to get this thing to work and fit the, the dimensions that we would need it to be. And I can explain a couple of challenges for us. First of all, you're looking at a corner site. We have added the street tree planters along Forest to match the, you know, the dynamic that's off to the west in that cross section. We're adding the green space that's highlighted in pink along 32nd Street, which we don't get credit for, because that currently is mostly a gravel slash sidewalk slash drive-through in, in, in and out. So we're, I mean, it's basically 147 foot entryway, east and west onto 32nd Street. So we're condensing that down to that entrance on the west that you see there. I've highlighted some underground detention and we've had to come up with a clever way of doing it, working with the city's engineering staff, because there is no outlet. My closest outlet, I believe, is a couple of blocks to the, it's like two or three blocks in each direction is the closest thing. So the feasibility of bringing storm sewer up to make it work made it quite a challenge. So what we're trying to do is because we're not able to meet the green space requirement, we're happy to install the underground detention, which would be a chambered system, which actually does get you the recharge in the ground. I think if we add the detention that we're showing, it gets us much closer to that 75%. Like if you wanted, for lack of a better word, absorption area. We have asked for the parking stalls because we know during our delivery days, we can have up to five or six additional employees coming to the store, because herein lies our biggest problem is our delivery trucks. And I, I was unable to track down the traffic engineer prior to this commission meeting, so I apologize for that. But our discussions were, they said, well, just bring a straight truck. Well, in Casey's fleet, we have no straight trucks. The trucks that we have are 51 foot trailers that are compartmentalized into three sections, one being ambient temperature, one freezer section, and one of, just a refrigerated section. The idea behind it is to have deliveries once a week so that we're not inconveniencing the store and the neighborhood and everyone else. But with that, it kind of asks me to do the entrance to the south. That is a 36 foot wide proposed entrance, if you include the width of the 14 feet of the alley, which would be a commercial entrance. And what that does is it, it helps our trucks make the turning movements in and out of the store. Because per design code, we would only be allowed that one access. If I pull in my truck, I'm backing it out onto 32nd Street. And we thought that's a bad idea. So with those, that's, they kind of just stack on each other. Yep, and that's, that's our truck turning template. That is actually a template that's a little bit larger. That is what's known as a WB 67 with the wheels pinned all the way at the back. We're not quite that big, but that, that gives you a representation of, of how we maneuver and we'll need that same space to get back out. Additionally, for the seven foot request, which comes into play in the south, where it says added in that direction, it's a little bit lighter green color. I have two and a half feet of sidewalk. I have two and a half feet of sidewalk into our property for the six foot sidewalk section for the new, you know, profile. Um, so I technically have seven feet from my property line to my curb, just two and a half of it's eaten up by the new sidewalk section. So, and then as I push that curb more to the north, it pushes my loading truck further to the north, blocking the, the access. So, I mean, it's just a really tight site. Um, the other one that we add, we previously were talking about just putting in, um, a concrete or a painted curb up there. So where it says added in that middle section next to the detention, uh, we've agreed to put some, uh, landscaping bushes and, and actually make that it, it, I know it's not your typical nine foot wide, but it's a, it's an effort to give as much green space as I possibly can. So in a nutshell, I think I've covered everything that we talked about. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, and I know this is a difficult one. So.
Commissioners, do you have any questions at this time?
This is, uh, Greg. What's he, I don't know if this is a question or just a comment yet, but Wally, uh, you know, as I watch the, the inner city sort of getting goes and some of the new actually craft stores, you know, they're, they're, they all have a bit more of an urban mentality and they're, uh, I've watched them load and unload. Um, in my neighborhood, I live near here and they're either small vehicles or quite frankly, they park on the street. Uh, some of the getting goes are pretty tight in some of those older neighborhoods. In other words, they're not trying to take a behemoth truck through parking lots. I understand it's a different set of challenges, but, but I do think we have to look at different ways to serve these stores when they're in urban settings, especially if it's in downtown. Um, so maybe, maybe that's just a comment more than a question.
Yeah. And, and I appreciate that comment. I'm just telling you, it, at this point in the fleet of trucks, there's not that now. And, and loading off of the street, I think was possibly considered, but I think traffic was saying, you know, it's not allowed right now. They don't like us even, you know, unloading docks and everything else backing out into the street. So I'm.
I, I, I think my, I actually do have a question as you're talking about that. Do, is there any kind of outdoor sitting area? You know, say I want some of that famous pizza or I want something. When I think of this street and this setting and the, the businesses across the street, I, I love how Forest Avenue is just kind of reinvigorating on its own. I mean, a lot of the headlines are, you know, on the southeast part of Drake, but, uh, has there been any consideration of that? I sure wish there was some.
I do not believe that there is any outdoor seating proposed in this one. Not saying that we couldn't add, you know, like a little patio or, you know, picnic table in one of the green spaces. You know, with some hardscape.
Great. Going the wrong direction. Thanks.
Yeah, well that, I, I don't know what else to do at that point. It's just, they seem to compound very quickly.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Wally, this is Johnny Alsovar. Um, along those lines that this is kind of a, a more urban setting. Is there an actual need for five additional parking lots than what's required? Assuming that this is not only a very pedestrian friendly corridor, but also I believe it's a, a dart line corridor as well.
That, that came more from Casey's operations that, you know, that they feel they have a pretty good idea of what a, a, you know, this new prototype's supposed to do. Um, I, I know even if I eliminated the north, the entire north parking area, then I get close to an eighty percent impervious surface. That's why, that's why we went to that underground because I'm, I'm just, I'm struggling with, um, with making sure that, I mean, the, the worst thing we could do is have people pull in and have no place to park, right? All the streets are full. Let's say, you know, uh, that, I, I think it's more of an operations question, not an engineering question on, from, from my end of it. And I, and my client has indicated that that's, you know, we've tried to skinny this as much as we can and, and that's why we're asking for the exceptions that we are. Uh, I mean, we were pretty candid since the beginning, including from the zoning. I think our concept has shown this since day one and we knew there would be challenges. But being that this is such a unique site, being that it's a, you know, uh, it's a rebuild within that corridor. I think there's, there's some design elements that we've done along Forest Avenue. That we don't have the seating space, but I'm sure somebody's going to sit on that retaining wall with the steps in front of the store and eat the pizza. Greg, maybe that's a spot. I could put a stool up there or something. Um, but it's, um, it looks like, you know, it, the, I, I don't know where to go after more green space a- at this point. If, if it came down to it, maybe, um, I could find one space and I say maybe. But realistically, I'm, I, I think with the offset of the detention, they, you know, eliminating a space saves me money, uh, putting in the detention costs us money, but I, I, I understand where staff is coming from on this site because it's, it's just a challenge. It, it's definitely a challenge. So, um, hopefully I answered your question.
Thank you.
Any other, uh, questions commissioners? If not, uh, are there any other, uh, speakers who wish to, uh, speak in support of this request?
There, there is, uh, Eric Nickel with Casey's and Abby Gilroy with NDC. I think Eric Nickel would represent the applicant here. He can speak as soon as he unmutes his microphone.
Hello, this is Eric Nickel with, uh, Casey's General Stores, uh, thirty-three oh five Southeast Dilwehr Avenue, Hagania Highway, five zero zero two one. I don't need to speak too much over, uh, what Wally's already said. I think just a couple of items, you know, this is the smallest building we have. You know, we've, we've taken a lot of thought in regard to the number of parking stalls that we, you know, want. I guess the biggest thing with that, um, not trying to take on street parking, you know, for either neighboring properties. Uh, you know, just to have them be up for that reason, but anywhere from let's say five to six and on, uh, busy unloading days, you know, we could have six to eight employees, you know, staffing a, a typical store. So I mean, that right there, we're going to ease up half of our parking pretty much on a regular basis. So that's kind of why, we've kind of came to this compromise from our original design. We've lost a stall or two. You know, as we, as Wally suggested, and we kind of came up with the compromise that there's not attention remote or, you know, or very remote, you know, like two and a half, three blocks, you know? The right way to get to it's almost impossible or impractical from a cost perspective. And so I guess, you know, we just like to, to know that all these kind of, uh, design alternatives kind of go hand in hand. Specifically in regard to the parking, I know we had some, uh, neighborhood meetings up front, uh, you know, months ago when we were still doing all this and, you know, they were, you know, a firm proponent for, you know, additional parking. You know, just because, you know, during the summer, yeah, you might, uh, walk, but during the winter and no inclement weather, you know, people are going to drive. So, I mean, we're just trying to be cognizant. I mean, I think the twelve was a requirement. We went to seventeen, like we were at eighteen. So, uh, just, you know, one kind of just to reiterate that. So not that we're not trying to strong arm the city. I mean, we're, you know, as Wally said, you know, we're trying to work with them on, on other aspects to kind of offset where we're at. But this is kind of just the bare bones that we think we can get, get away with and make this, you know, feasible. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in support?
There's Madam Chair, there's Abby Gilroy. And, uh, she's unmuted.
Okay. All right. You can hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, great. The Abby Gilroy with Neighborhood Development Corporation, twenty-three thirty-one University Avenue. And just wanted to pop on briefly, um, Wally did a nice job, as did Eric, to kind of explain where the project has landed, uh, since we were here last. Um, I did want to say I appreciate what the team has done, uh, the compromises that Casey's has made to, uh, make this project work. We want to see this type of investment in the neighborhood. The neighbors were very excited to have, um, this market here and the services, the pizza and, and all the convenience items, um, that we all love. So, um, very much appreciate the support so far in the project as well as, uh, the compromises from Casey's team. So, um, for us, that's all I really have to say. I think Eric touched on it with the parking. Uh, that was just really important to the neighborhood. We obviously have a lot of congestion in this area and trying to contain it on site as much as possible, uh, would be ideal. Um, there is some parking on Forest, like Eric pointed out, but some of their busiest times are during the times that that, that parking isn't allowed. So that's just something to kind of think about as well. So that's all I have for you, but I am here, uh, if there are any questions for our organization in regards to the project. Thanks so much for your time on this.
Thank you, Abby. Um, if there are no other, uh, speakers in support, are there any speakers in opposition to the request? Or anyone else in the audience? Eric, do you see anybody?
I do not see any other hands.
Uh, well, uh, commissioners, do you have any, uh, additional questions for city staff at this time? If not, we will close the, uh, public hearing and, uh, commissioners, what are your thoughts? Any comments from commissioners? Anybody willing to make a motion at this point?
Dory, this is Greg Jones. I, I think I'd be inclined to allow Casey's to do what Wally presented us. But I'm not sure how that reflects back on what the city staff wanted us to allow or to deny. I think it's basically allowing everything, although I think he, he showed some green space in some of those islands that weren't there before. So that may get rid of some. So maybe staff has to help say what Wally's proposal doesn't agree with.
Staff, could you help with, uh?
Madam Chair, so, you know, I think Casey's is still asking for all the elements. What they've sort of offered since the staff report went out was to provide detention. So that's really not anything being requested to be waived at this point. Um, I should point out that, just because there's not storm sewer adjoining in the public, uh, street network, we, we have solutions on small sites where we can allow, um, release at the curb, for smaller volumes where it isn't problematic. You know, we're not creating any fountains given the amount of volume that we're talking about. So you know, there is a, a design solution to provide the detention. So they've offered that, taken that off the table. I think that, uh, what you heard from the engineer, Wally Pelz, was that they're very close to being, making up the difference of that impervious, uh, condition that's part of the intent of why we want impervious. I mean, there's, there's a couple of reasons why we want impervious. It's also shading and, you know, the landscaping softening of the site, but, um, they're not totally devoid of, of, of landscaping. So really they're still asking essentially for everything. They're, they're very adamant about their, their service model for servicing the site with trucks. So that seems to be the main piece of this here. Um, I think it's a good thing that we're getting detention. In lieu of maybe some of the lack of, um, pervious surfaces that we would normally get on a site, but, uh, and again, I think they've, they've focused on the fact that this is still a, a, a big difference from the current condition of the site. So, um, I don't know if that helps Greg or not.
So if there's a motion, Eric, would that be approval of parts A, B, D, E, and F then?
Yeah, let's go. And I, so let's zoom in on it so you can see it maybe a little better. So A is, you know, we're, we're, staff recommends A, so I would assume it's staff on that part. And then we're recommending denial of parts B, D, E, and F. They're asking to have those, uh, still approved. C isn't part of it and, until B would be denied. But now, um, if you're looking to approve B, C doesn't even come into play. Plus they're, they're agreeing to meet C anyway. So that's off the table. So right now they're, they're asking for A, B, B, E, and F. Staff is in concurrence with A. I guess the commission has to weigh in on B, B, E, and F. And I can go back up if it's easier to read that in the heading of the staff report for the commission. I'll do that.
Eric, this is Greg again. Talk to me about F.
That's this, uh, I'll go back to the drawing here. That's this one right here. So that normally would be a full, uh, sized, um, with a tree planting. So they're saying that their turning movements aren't going to let that work for them.
So because it's not big enough, um, you want it to be bigger. They want, even though they're putting it green, that's not good enough for staff.
It's an improvement. Yeah. I mean, we're not going to make any shift on the fly kind of changes to our recommendation. But yes, that's a improvement to that condition, but you'd still need to waive it. Because it wouldn't have the planting. It wouldn't meet the end cap definition, so to speak, but it, but you could say something like subject to the, the schematic provided at the hearing or something, you know, if you want to wrap it up a little bit to that provision.
Well, Eric, correct me if I'm wrong here, uh, but the concern there is that with the delivery trucks, uh, making those turns will potentially just destroy that little planter that's being proposed there.
Yeah. So they're, they're not actually even, so they're, I think they're, they're talking about making it turf to get some absorption. I'm not sure that gains us a whole lot, to be honest with you, but, um, they're offering it at this point. But it still wouldn't qualify as what we call the end, end cap. So, you would still need to waive that. And they're actually meeting that setback here, like he said, but part of it is, is, um, that sidewalk that they're going to end up going partially into the site with, so that they don't have the full amount of area on the planter. So. Does that help out, uh, Greg? I'm going to go back to the A, B, C, D, and F, so you can read those a little easier on the heading of the staff report. Again, C is really not in play because they're willing to, to meet the engineers requirements there for stormwater.
Greg, this is Jason Maness. And if you're struggling with, um, how to word a motion, you might also just, uh, suggest granting the relief needed to approve the design as presented tonight. That might be another way in that, um, to ensure that everything's covered if, if you are inclined to. if, if you are inclined to, um, be supportive of what they've presented tonight.
That's what I was looking for. Thank you, Jason.
You're welcome.
Dory, so moved.
Thank you, Greg. Any further discussion? If not, we're ready for a vote.
Uh, Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jensen?
Yes.
Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Greg Watier?
Yes.
Greg Jones?
Yes.
Abby Chungith?
Yes.
Rocky Spazato?
Yes.
Will Page?
Yes.
Johnny Alsovar?
Yes.
Emily Webb?
Yes.
Dory Brials?
Yes.
Caleb Burksen?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Motion carries thirteen zero.
Uh, thank you, everyone. Uh, we're now ready. Uh, we have two items remaining. We're ready for item number 10, a request from P and A Investments LLC represented by Sarah Hopkins to review an approval of a public hearing site plan Hopkins Development to allow rent, uh, for property located at three seven two zero Sixth Avenue. And I believe Jason's handling this item.
Yes, uh, thank you, Chair. This is Jason Van Ness and with staff. Um, this is a site plan for a property on Sixth Avenue. We got, uh, some waiver requests. Just, you know, quickly I'll, I'll run through them and we can circle back, uh, to this list if we need to. A waiver of the parking, the building covers the entire site. So that's what, um, is pushing that. Uh, waiver of bike rack requirement. Um, and Hopkins actually updated their proposal and, uh, is now asking or proposing to do a bike rack. So B could be struck. Uh, C is waiver of canopy requirement. The original proposal didn't include any street trees, therefore the canopy, pre-canopy coverage requirement could be met. Um, I'll dive into that a little bit. There is, uh, kind of an update for that with applicant. Part D is, uh, this is a corner lot with frontage on Douglas and Sixth, and, uh, our landscaping standards for, um, a setting of this type and a building of this type would have Class A walks on both streets with street trees. E is waiver of the underground, or yeah, underground of utilities. There's overhead lines, uh, applicants made that request. And then there is a rooftop mechanical, uh, that exists on the, the building that, uh, isn't screened on the west side. Just to help, help focus in, uh, highlighted on the map is the subject property. It's on the southwest corner of the intersection of Douglas Avenue, Sixth Avenue, kind of the northern end of the, uh, commercial district there in Highland Park, Oak Park neighborhoods. A couple photographs looking at the properties, this, this building here in the corner. Can see the existing condition, overhead lines that run around along Douglas. Uh, this particular street line is actually on the other property. Another photograph, uh, showing that rooftop mechanical. It is screened on all sides except for this west side by a parapet wall. Uh, this is the demo plan, uh, with the site plan showing, uh, tearing out to kind of there's a, you saw in those pictures, it's excess, uh, pavement. Uh, they are proposing to tear that out. Uh, with this original submittal, they were showing just coming back in with, uh, with turf and then sidewalks, uh, no street trees. Um, they have updated their, um, their proposal and I'll, I'll get into that in a minute. And Sarah's put together a nice, uh, presentation to share with you tonight as well. So just, um, just to make sure we're on the same page, uh, I'll go ahead and walk through this and then I'll just, uh, comment on what they, what changes they've made. So on part A, uh, we are recommending approval of the type one design alternative to waive the minimum on-street parking requirements. The reason this ended up on the agenda is at the time, you know, we were making our early decisions. Um, we thought that there was an opportunity for them to go look for some shared parking agreement or arrangements for, um, parking in the vicinity. Uh, we recognize that the building covers the entire site, but there is the ability in the code to have shared parking. I understand they have spent some time looking into that. I, I don't know how successful they've been. Uh, certainly Sarah and, um, her team can answer, uh, provide an update on that, but we were recommending waiver of that subject to shared parking agreement for off, um, off-site parking to the satisfaction, excuse me, of the planning and urban design administrator. And then on B, which is the bike parking, uh, they, they're going to provide that. So we don't have to talk about that one anymore. Uh, C is the tree canopy. I, um, there is, they are at this time proposing at least one or one street tree on Sixth Avenue. I'll get into that in a minute. That would probably be enough to address, uh, C. So, uh, I think we can consider that as being addressed. Uh, it is a type one level and staff could, uh, sort that out. Um, so I'm not, I'm not too worried about C. Uh, D is the Class A walk with street tree requirements. Um, we are supportive, you know, Douglas Avenue, uh, that the walk on the north there, you know, that transitions into residential pretty quick. Uh, we think a standard walk with grass would be appropriate there. Uh, there is the overhead line. If the line, if the commission does uphold the requirement to have that buried, there'd be ability to provide one or two, um, overhead, or excuse me, overstory trees. Uh, if that is waived, there, there is enough space for one ornamental tree. Uh, we would look for that on, on Douglas, on Sixth Avenue. Uh, we are asking or suggesting that be a Class A walk with the, the tree wells. Um, the applicant is agreeable to that. So I won't, I won't spend time on the rationale for why we believe that's important. Uh, the difference there is, um, they're suggesting just doing one tree more at the southern, in a southern bed and then the northern bed being just grasses or some sort of other plantings. Uh, they're, they're, in the past, we had concerns with trees and vision clearance triangles, but as we've progressed and worked with our engineering staff, we've come to the conclusion that trees really aren't any different than street poles. And so I believe there's an opportunity to do the two trees. I, we could work with the applicant to adjust where they sit. So if there's needs to react to architecture of the building, I know she's, uh, proposing a fair amount of glass, you know, we could work with that. The other alternative would be to look at, uh, the shape of the tree, you know, uh, maybe a, a, a narrower growth tree. Uh, maybe one of them could be of that nature and the other one's more of a shade tree. But I, I, I think we have an opportunity to work there and, um, happy to kind of sort that out, uh, with applicant if the, the commission's supportive of that. And then part F would be the waiver of the rooftop mechanical. And I, I believe I just skipped over E. I apologize. E is the underground of the utilities. Uh, when we wrote the report, we didn't have, we had a figure and I've since learned that we didn't actually have all the numbers, um, of, of the cost estimates, but we also didn't know the project totals. And it was really hard for us to, uh, look at how much, you know, what, what would that represent, the project budget? So I know the applicant has put together some information on that to kind of share with the commission of the magnitude of the costs is it's how it's proportional to their project. Um, I, I think what we're looking for with staff is to have that dialogue with the applicant and the commission and, and kind of work on that together. Uh, and then getting back to part F, uh, that's the rooftop mechanical screening. Um, we believe there's an opportunity to screen it on that side. I, I think that they have some information on how that would impact them. Uh, we can have that, um, discussion too. This is the notice map. See, we didn't get anything back. Um, that I, I, I don't have, Sarah has some building elevation drawings to share with you in her presentation, which I have after here. So I, I don't have that in my part. Um, but I'd be happy to answer your questions you have at this time.
Any questions? Jason?
Jason, this is Rocky. Just a quick question. We were talking about the trees. I, I think early on you made a comment about how that the, uh, applicant was, um, suggesting putting one tree in and you thought you could work with that. And then it sounded like you went the other direction and said, hey, we expect them to have two trees. Can you give me clarification on that?
Sure. Yeah. I believe that you can get two trees in there and that's what I would recommend. Um, I, the, the, the part of, uh, working with them would be to adjust if we need to look at a different tree species to react to the architecture of the building or, um, maybe shift the trees around in the bed if there was particular elements that they were wanting to try to block, not block. That's what I meant by working with them. Is, did I answer the question?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thanks, Rocky.
Jason, this is Johnny. I have a question just to, uh, make sure I'm up to date here. A, B, and C should no longer be considered. Is that what you mentioned? As far as, uh, that has been taken care of essentially?
Um, well, A, I, we need to hear back from them. Uh, I, I know that they were working to try to see if they could find somebody to partner with on parking. I don't know if they've been successful, so I think we need to hear from them. Uh, B, yes, uh, we could strike B because they're proposing to do that. And then C, yeah, I, I think you could consider that, um, what they're proposing. Um, with the one tree would address that as well. I, I, I still think we, you know, as staff, I'm suggesting a couple, couple of trees, but, um, does that help Johnny?
Yes, thank you. And I think that the couple of trees will be part of D, right?
Yes. Yeah. D, yeah. Yep. I see that, oh, go ahead. Sorry.
No, no, Jason, go ahead.
I was just gonna say that I see that Eric Cannon, the engineer for the project is, has his hand up whenever the group is ready.
There are no more questions? I think we're ready to hear from him.
All right, Eric, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you very much. Uh, Eric Cannon, twenty-seven, twenty-seven Southwest Snyder Boulevard on behalf of Snyder and Associates, um, civil engineer on the project. And I don't know if you could pop back to the site plan, um, that kind of shows the proposed layout. I think that's a good one I'll talk from and I'll, I'll try to be brief here. Then I know Sarah has a presentation prepared to kind of walk through things in a little more detail, but appreciate everybody's efforts and, and staff's willing to work with us on this. Um, one thing I do want to note, this is a remodel project. It's not new construction. Um, so it really does kind of change the character of the proposed project, the budget, um, and the feasibility of it. That is something I think that needs to be taken into consideration. It's also a vacant building that's, that's been vacant for many, many years. Um, there's a developer, a local developer that's finally willing to make a major investment in the neighborhood. So I think those things are all important. Um, parking is touched on. Um, there was efforts made. I know Sarah will talk about some of the specific property owners, um, being in the neighborhood, but it was effort made to reach out to some of the adjacent lots that are privately held. Uh, no one was willing to commit, um, spaces from a lease standpoint. Um, they did kind of all say, hey, if somebody parks there, we understand that. But, um, you know, the actual dedication of that was going to be a challenge. So I think one thing to note is we do have on-street parking on Sixth available, um, adjacent to the site as well as on the north side of Douglas there. So there is ample on-street parking, given the, the neighborhood, um, and the, the amount of parking that is available on the private lots adjacent. So B and C, we did touch on, and you are correct, that even one tree would meet the canopy coverage requirement on C. So I think that one's addressed. When it comes to the streetscape, um, one thing I would note is this property only has 50 feet of frontage. The way the code reads is one tree every 30 feet. Uh, so if you come 30 feet off the corner and put a tree in, I guess that's part of the reason we feel the code is met. Um, I know that's a little bit of interpretation. Um, also, as noted on here, you'll see that hashed area is the vision clearance triangle. I know staff and, and traffic's taking a little bit different approach here, but I do feel, you know, forcing a tree up into that corner, um, there is some reality to the fact of having a tree right there. The building already sits up against the corner. Vision's going to be hard. Sixth Avenue is a fairly busy street, as you know, from a transportation standpoint. So I just, you know, the thought being any effort to not impede that vision any more than we have to makes a lot of sense. Um, and the reality is her, you know, her business is going to be floor to ceiling glass and we'd like to, you know, take every opportunity to present that, that space as much as possible to the public and, and the patrons. The Class A sidewalk, they are totally in agreement with that. I think that makes a ton of sense. Um, and, you know, the waiver of the, um, overhead electric on Sixth would also, or on Douglas would, would kind of, um, impede the ability to put any trees there. So that's why the waiver is, is being made on Douglas. Now, the underground electric component, I would like to make sure that's understood. There are really three components there. Um, there's overhead electric lines running along Douglas. There's also the existing wood pole and fixture on Douglas, and then the overhead electric service from the pole into the building. Um, as Jason mentioned in the staff report, it notes $30,000. That is only for a portion of that. Um, the total for those is actually $47,000. The total project budget as it sits right now is 294,000. So this would represent roughly 16% of the total project budget, which really makes the project unfeasible, uh, for the developers. So that's really the main concern with the ask when it comes to the overhead electric and, and the, the request for the waiver. Uh, we are also looking at a residential neighborhood to the west here, uh, and so, you know, the ability of that to redevelop and those lines to go underground is, I would say, very, very slim. Um, and I think it keeps in, in harmony with the existing character of the neighborhood to the west. Uh, the last item being the rooftop screening. This is an existing condition. As you can see in the photo on the screen right now, there is a parapet wall on both Douglas and Sixth that, you know, blocks all of that. It's only in this condition where you're heading eastbound on Douglas from the neighborhood where you're going to see some of this existing equipment on the roof. Um, typically you have a building next to this or a business next to this. The property owner in the building next to this actually sits back and is recessed. So I think that's really the kind of unique situation here. Um, and the cost to put that screening up there again is, is pretty prohibitive to the overall budget of the project. So given the, the character of the neighborhood, the existing condition and, and the property owner of the west, we would request that, that that also be considered. So appreciate your guys' time on this. I know Sarah has a presentation she'd like to walk through as well. Be happy to answer any questions for you.
If there are no further questions, uh, could we hear from Sarah?
Sarah, go ahead and unmute yourself and I'll get your slides ready for you.
Hi, everyone. Sarah Hopkins. My address is thirty-two eleven Wakanda Court. Thank you so much for listening tonight. I know it's late, so I appreciate you hanging in there. Uh, wanted to walk through a little bit about my vision for this to help you understand why the waivers are so incredibly important for me to follow through with this project. You could go to the next slide. And we'll kind of skip through here because this is really, Eric has covered on a lot of it. So you can go ahead and go to the next one. But I grew up in Douglas Acre, which, which is a neighborhood just east of Highland Park, but my grandma lived in the neighborhood. So I spent a lot of my childhood going to Union Park, Chuck's, Aqualand, Highland Park Bakery. So to see all of the, uh, neighborhood revitalization happening, it really, really made me want to pick this neighborhood to have my business. I have always had a dream of having a neighborhood real estate office. And I want to be the first place that people go to so that I can show them how great this area of town is. There's nobody that's a bigger cheerleader than myself for showing people the amazing opportunities to live in this city. And I love this street for the fact that we can take clients to the new coffee shop across the road to write contracts. We can go celebrate with pizza and beer at Chuck's afterwards. Next slide. The total needed to make this is 294,000 and that is not including the acquisition costs. So to bury the Mid-American lines, it truly does make this project unfeasible. With all of the requirements that have been done up to this point, we, really every penny matters. And if the waivers are not issued, unfortunately, I do not think I will be able to move forward with this project. Next slide. As you can see, it is a vast improvement of what we plan to do. Next slide. But before I get to how important it is for these waivers to be issued, I need to explain the importance of my vision. For years, I have watched realtors and homeowners flock to the suburbs. I was born and raised in the city of Des Moines and still a Des Moines resident. I have continued to be a champion for our neighborhoods and I want to be a part of the efforts to strengthen our I have continued to be a champion for our neighborhoods and I want to be a part of the efforts to strengthen our city. So the revitalization of the Highland Park Oak Park has been really impressive and inspiring to watch. One way to enhance the success of the commercial side of Highland Park Oak Park revitalization is to also strengthen the residential parts of the neighborhood. As a Realtor, I want to have an active role in educating and guiding homeowners, homebuyers to explore this neighborhood. Located on Sixth Avenue, this building will improve curb appeal and the streetscape for anyone looking to move to this neighborhood. With my real estate team housed here, we can also bridge the gap in educating, marketing, and promoting the lifestyle and appeal to homeowners searching for a new place to call home. With all of the commercial renovations and new shops in the neighborhood, this is a perfect place to invest my business in. This really is about so much more than just my building. It's about connecting the dots to a cohesive neighborhood that is thriving and full of life. The waivers I am requesting truly are necessary to make this project happen. Next slide. As Eric touched on earlier, I am willing to do the bike rack and I think that I have a really good compromise for the landscaping, which would also include the tree conversation for the fifteen percent canopy. Next slide. For the parking, we did reach out to Dan who owns the building that Des Moines Mercantile is housed in. Uh, he recognizes that he has parking spots, but he is not willing to give any of those to me. I don't know what else to do for parking. There is plenty of street parking and I don't think that it will be an issue whatsoever. Next slide. Bike rack is gone. We can move on to that. Um, for the fifteen percent canopy, you know, this isn't that big of a deal. It's really more down to aesthetics. And if you go to the next slide, I can show you what I mean. We're, we're going to have the exterior space really be an extension of the office. I want this to be a very, very neighborhood real estate office. I want people to be able to come here, have coffee outside, have whatever. And if we do a tree at that next place where they're suggesting, I think that it will really impede on the view and the sightline of the beautiful storefront of the building. Um, again, I know it's not the end of the world, but I just aesthetically think it would look a lot better. Next slide. Um, so this is where I propose the compromise. And I believe that staff, it sounds like they may be in agreement with this as well. Um, I've attached the bids below in the next slide, but the thirteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-three-dollar bid for the Sixth Avenue, I'm willing to do if we can get that Douglas Avenue waived. I think that it would still look really great. I think that that is the main drivability of the neighborhood and what matters the most. Next slide. Here's just a rundown of both bids. You can move to the next slide. Um, this is the big one. These are the Mid-American power lines. It really is the biggest expense of anything in the project. Um, and I think it really would set the precedent to any small business owner that if they want to come into these neighborhoods and be able to be a part of the revitalization. You know, all of the programs such as Invest DSM really are powered on the willingness to want to increase the neighborhood vitality through small businesses. So i- if, if you're going to make people like me who truly cannot afford to have these Mid-American lines buried, you're going to get big corporations such as Dollar General that quite frankly, we already have enough of throughout the city and don't necessarily add to the livability of the neighborhood that we're looking for. So I'm really, really hoping that you will consider um, waiving this. I think with all of the other lines that are still going to be above, i- it's not going to matter. Nobody can see, i- it's not going to be a sore thumb to see lines overhead because they're everywhere else. Next slide. I personally think that it's going to look worse with a cage around this mechanical, considering that you cannot see it from any other angle except on the west side of the building heading eastbound. Um, I would ask that this is a pretty silly way to spend nearly twelve thousand dollars on the project when for three to five thousand dollars, I could have a beautiful mural painted on the north side of the building. And that to me just seems like such a better way to spend money than to spend twelve thousand dollars on a cage that you can only see from one angle in the neighborhood. Next slide. Oh, that's just the bid for the cage and you can go to the next one. Here's the current state of the building. I think we would all agree that the improvements that I'm doing are going to greatly impact the curb appeal to the neighborhood. Next slide. A few more reasons, I just think encouraging small business development, many of these requirements just simply are not feasible for small businesses like myself. Um, traffic breeds traffic. My business is going to make it easy for people to buy and sell here. It's going to give more opportunities to support the other small businesses that are in the neighborhood. And this building really will be a huge improvement along Sixth Avenue and not burying those Mid-American lines will have little impact on the overall curb appeal. Last slide. Um, this is a rendering of what the inside will look like. I just wanted to say thank you for your time. This has obviously been a very, very long project where I've been under contract for seven, almost eight months. Um, and as a first-time developer to this, um, I just wanted to thank my team because they have definitely got me through it and I appreciate you listening to this and hope that you will consider the waivers.
Thank you, Sarah. Are there any questions at this point? Do we have any other speakers who wish to uh, speak in support of this request?
We have Abby Gilroy. I'll um, go ahead and unmute yourself, Abby.
Okay. Um, Abby Gilroy here again, um, with Neighborhood Development Corporation, twenty-three thirty-one University. And just wanted to um, speak in support of the project. Uh, our organization's been working with Sarah and her team, providing some technical assistance, um, to help her bring this project to fruition. You may or may not know, we've spent a lot of time, um, and, and funding along with the city of Des Moines and Invest DSM in a partnership um, here on Sixth Avenue, just a little bit south of here, doing the Highland Park Bakery, uh, Des Moines Mercantile Store. Uh, Chuck's is underway now. So a lot of effort has gone into this quarter. So we are thrilled to see um, small business already looking in the neighborhood to um, revitalize some of these empty storefronts. We want to see these storefronts fall again. We want vibrancy. We want people working down here, living down here. Like Sarah said, going to get coffee, going to grab pizza over lunch or after work. Um, that's, that's kind of the, the environment we need to create. And so when we started getting into this process, um, these things started to add up very quickly. Something of this scale for a small business owner, um, to absorb is very difficult. And what I don't want to see happen is that um, the waivers are not approved and she has to go elsewhere with this project. We have a lot of momentum here and we've got some investment like, like Sarah happening that I want to make sure we retain these businesses in our Des Moines neighborhoods. We need them so, so badly to stay. So I just wanted to, to voice that and um, hopefully we can all come to some compromise tonight and, and see her project to fruition. I think we'd all be happy to see what she's proposing versus what's there today. So um, that's all I have to say about it. We are supportive and hopeful that uh, something can come together on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers in support of the project?
Yes, I'm gonna go um, allow Dean, if you want to unmute yourself and give us your name and address.
Uh, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, my name is Dean Meester. I live at six-twenty-one Douglas. I'm actually in the notification area. I'm a total of a half a block from the property. I was very excited to receive the notice actually that uh, someone was going to redevelop the parcel. So um, glad to have Sarah in the neighborhood. Um, I'm just glad to hear some of the changes that she outlined earlier. I was going to push back on some of these things, but uh, it sounds like she's already addressed, they're already addressing everything I was concerned about. So um, I'll just say I fully support the waiver of the onsite parking. Um, even as a person who's likely to have some of her clients parking in front of my house, I have no problem with that. I, there's plenty of on-street parking in the neighborhood. She's welcome. I think she should get that waiver. Um, glad to hear she's willing to put in the bike rack. Um, glad to hear, it sounds like we're, I, I would like to see a tree or two, um, on Sixth Avenue. Um, and I fully respect her concerns about the cost with burying utility ground, utility wires for um, E. Um, item E and I, I'd support that waiver as well. I don't think that that's a reasonable cost to stick on her. Um, and I can see those rooftop mechanicals from my front porch. Like I said, I'm slightly higher than her with the elevation and like a half a block away. I have no, I have no desire to see her spend twelve thousand dollars to screen mechanicals that I could not care about having to see. So um, I think waiving that is perfectly acceptable as well. So I'm actually completely excited about the project. And like I said, the only thing, um, based on what was presented tonight, the only thing I would say is I really hope to get a tree or two on Sixth Avenue. And other than that, everything that sounds like they're about to do sounds great. So that's it.
Thank you.
Next, Dory, I'm gonna um, JB Conlon, if you want to unmute yourself.
Thank you, Jay, Jason. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I've seen that building for years and years and years be so dilapidated, uh, shopped and had pizza uh, Chuck's and uh, used to go to the um, um, haunted house across the street. Uh, used to go into uh, the uh, pet store on the corner, so know the area well. I would really love to see this uh, developed. I can't think of something, I was talking in real estate about highest and best use for a property, but a real estate office on this side of town. Um, I can't think of anything else that would uh, go hand in hand with bringing values up in, in the neighborhood and that revitalization as Abby talked about. So uh, I think this is a fantastic broad, broad, project and the waiver should be granted. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other uh, speakers, Jason?
I don't see any other ones.
Okay, are there any uh, anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition to this request?
I'm not seeing any here.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any uh, questions from the commission for the city staff at this time? If not, we will close the public hearing. And commissioners, what's your uh, desire at this point?
Oh, this is Francis Bogus speaking, and I just think that this should uh, project should be applauded uh, like other projects that are revitalizing uh, commercial districts and urban neighborhoods, just like uh, the infill housing uh, projects and these renovations of dilapidated buildings. I believe that our rules and regulations are for planning and zoning are important, but uh, when you have to balance it with uh, this, we, uh, with the projects that are coming up, we have to look at feasibility and what they bring to the neighborhood. I just think that should be uh, taken into consideration. That would support uh, granting the uh, the waivers asked for, especially since the fencing to the someone who did show up is not opposed to it. And I think uh, we could, they can negotiate regarding the one or two trees on Douglas Avenue. Those are my comments.
Um, Francis, is that a motion?
Yes, it's a motion. If you want to treat it like it's a motion.
Perfect.
So the, the motion, uh, let me ask, um, Francis, the, the motion includes then the waiver of the underground utilities.
That's correct.
Yeah, thank you.
The, uh, this is Jason's staff. The only thing I, uh, Francis, if you could clarify, you've mentioned one to two trees. I, uh, could you just give us a little direction?
You want me to say one and a half? But let's go with one tree and see how it goes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood. So I, when I work with the applicant after the meeting, I know what we're doing.
Okay. Thanks a lot for asking for clarification, Jason.
Yep, no problem.
Lori, this is Greg Jones. I have a question. So on part D, what are we, what are we getting or not getting?
On, on part D, um, the only thing that the applicants are requesting now is waiver of the Class A walk on Douglas and then waiver of the tree requirement on Douglas and then uh, one less tree on, on Sixth Avenue. So normally you'd have two trees on Sixth Avenue. She's requesting to do just one. So the other way to look at it is be what you actually get on the ground is a Class A walk on Sixth Avenue with one tree bed with a tree in it and then the other bed with some plantings. And then on Douglas, you get a five-foot sidewalk with uh, turf.
And, and no tree?
And no tree.
Then I, this is a piddly, piddly, piddly thing, but I object to the motion if we don't ask for a tree on the Douglas side.
And on the Douglas side, if uh, the utilities are waived, we'd have space for a, one ornamental tree.
Seems like the least we could do.
I think along those lines, I, I am in agreement as far as um, whether it's two trees on the Douglas side or one and one. So one tree on Douglas and one ornamental tree on Douglas. Sorry. One overstory tree on Sixth and one ornamental on Douglas. But uh, if there's a way of getting the two, I think uh, the applicant has a compromise to, to a lot of, of the things that we have requested and we should commend her for that.
This is Greg. What's your, I'm, I'm in support of what Greg and Johnny have said. Um, maybe Greg, you could ask for friendly amendment to Francis.
Uh, I'll, I'll accept a friendly amendment, Greg.
Okay, thank you.
So just make sure I understand the friendly amendment. It's just that two, two street trees be provided on the either front, combined frontages, whether it's two on Sixth or one and one.
That's correct.
Okay.
So I think, are we ready for a vote?
All right, I'll go ahead. Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jenison?
Yes.
Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Greg Watier?
Yes.
Greg Jones?
Yes.
Abby Chungith?
Yes.
Rocky Spazato?
Yes.
Will Page?
Yes.
Johnny Alsovar?
Yes.
Emily Webb?
Yes.
Dory Brials?
Yes.
Caleb Burksen?
Yes.
And Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Motion carries thirteen zero.
Thank you, Tyler. And now for our final uh, agenda item of the evening. Item number eleven is a request from R M Madden Construction, Inc., represented by Michael Madden for a review and approval of a public hearing site plan for property located at one-one-two-four Harold Avenue.
Chairman of this commission, Jason Van Ness and the planning staff. So the, this is an infill house project. Uh, we have two requests for design alternatives. Uh, one is having attached garage entrance on the front facade, uh, where the house type in this district would normally require it to be side-loaded or rear-loaded. And then the other is waiver requirement for a public sidewalk. Go ahead and this is the subject property on the south side of Harold Avenue. Um, let me see. Here we go. Here's the building elevations. I see the, the proposed design has the front loaded garage, um, sticking in front of the house. At the top of my head, I think it's proposed to be about thirteen feet out. Site plan, I did get a, um, emailed um, update uh, from the applicant, uh, some line drawings. I believe that um, here we go. All right, should be able to see that. I'll let him speak to that when he presents because it, it looks a little different than the, the drawing that came in with our application. I, in his uh, request for type or to design alternative relief, he did provide some um, photographs of some houses on both Harold and Emma avenues uh, in this particular area. I think one thing to point out is uh, Harold uh, runs, it's basically this stretch is like five blocks long. It runs from Southwest Ninth to Southwest Fourteenth Street. So there's no real cross streets. Uh, and I'll touch on that here shortly. Some photographs of the site. Kind of the area. The, there is a very eclectic mix of house styles on this stretch of road. Um, all sorts of things running from, you know, what you see here to some, uh, I understand some brick, brick houses and just brick, brick houses and just a variety of construction. We did look in that, you know, that that five block run, I mean, their super block, there are sixty seven houses along that stretch. And we did find that seven of them have attached garages. So the predominant character, even though the style of the house is mixed, is a detached garage in the rear. Like I said, you you could also the the stand by right, you could do an attached garage with either side or rear loaded. So those are just kind of some observations to share with you. We have some photographs of the houses that do have the attached garage. And I think the thing that we the observation we made that I want to share with you is that in these seven examples, the garages either are relatively flush with the house or set back. Think we do have one right here that sets out three feet. And you'll you'll see in our staff recommendation, we we did offer up a recommendation denial, but we also threw out there that, you know, if the commission feels that there is enough of these houses in this area that it's a it's fits the character. We were we were just weren't a hundred percent sure on staff and we wanted to have that conversation with you. Like I said, there's sixty seven, seven of them have the attached garage at the front. But if the commission felt that that was something that fit the character of the area, we looked at this as kind of a model on on keeping that that garage so it doesn't project too far in front of the house since the seven or so that do have the attached garage are fairly flush. Just getting to the staff report, we also did recommend denial of the sidewalk waiver. You know, we've had a lot of talks on on that and both tonight and over the last several meetings. I will note that there is there is not a sidewalk in the stretch. So this would be the first sidewalk in. And, you know, I'm sure we'll continue to have conversations. And I was alluded to earlier, you know, we are trying to work with the committee that was put together and find some solutions. We just haven't gotten there yet. This is the response map. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
If there are no questions for Jason, is the applicant present to speak?
Go ahead, Michael, unmute yourself.
All right, I'm here. Good evening again. Another item on here tonight. So only two items or two issues on this one. This first one's a little bit, little bit different. Like Jason was saying, there are a lot of houses in in this area that have attached garages. And again, to Jason's point, this neighborhood has a wide variety of houses, styles and architecture. So having a house with the garage that protrudes in thirteen feet, I don't think it's going to look strange or out of place because you might look at a different house, ten houses down that, you know, maybe have a garage, but there might be other style elements that don't fit the code today. So and the reason we went with this plan is we want to satisfy the garage requirement, especially when we see it fit. You know, this this neighborhood is a little has some higher end for infill. It's not quite as low as some other lots that we go into as far as values. So we saw it fit with doing a two car attached garage. And this plan really fits this lot with the topography really well because it is a front loading garage. It slopes pretty heavily to the the northwest corner, which allows for us rolling the grade around. The picture that was on there of the separate site plan is, you know, that one there on West Street. That is the plan that we did. Similar zoning, you know, about the same width lot. This is our other option essentially for us. And, I mean, personally, I would I would take the front load garage every day over this. You got a lot of concrete, not a very functional backyard. It's the same square footage house, a little bit larger garage in this other plan. Yeah, I mean, you don't really want that much concrete anyways. And you get one car pulling in and out. It's just it's just a lot less functional than this other plan. But anyways, that that's what we did on a on a lot that we did not take to P and Z due to time. But yeah, I guess that's that's it for the garage. And then, as for the sidewalk, there are no sidewalks along Harold between Southwest Ninth and Southwest Fourteenth, that five block range. And we just, if we take anything to P and Z, we're going to fight this sidewalk, really. It just is a, for it being five foot wide, it's a extreme added cost that gets passed directly to the homeowner. And when there's no other sidewalks around, there's not really a benefit to it for a homeowner. That is. So it it's just added costs and, you know, appraisers don't take that into account when appraising. I really understand this rule for developments in Greenfield, but in infill, where there's no sidewalks, I just don't see it fit. So I guess if you have any questions about the the house plan or anything, feel free to ask.
Well, this is Greg Watier. So are you proposing which site plan? I'm confused.
The initial one with the front loaded garage. The other one was just an example of what we would do if we were not allowed to go with this site plan. Let's show them.
Can you show the rear one again? Great, thank you. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers in support of the project?
I don't see any hands raised.
Are there any speakers in opposition to the request this evening?
I didn't see any hands raised on that either.
Okay. And commissioners, do we have any additional questions for staff at this time? If not, we will close the public hearing and open it up for commissioners deliberation.
This is Greg Watier. I'll just share my two thoughts. I I can be supportive of not requiring the sidewalk for all the reasons that we talk about, I think, in every single P and Z meeting. But as for the garage, I think the new plan that he showed is more in character with this neighborhood. I think the garage door should be back in the back or detached garage and not facing the street would be my preference. Thanks.
Thank you, Greg. Any other comments?
Dory, this is the other Greg. I I get why we don't want to have the garage clear out in the front, but I think all that extra paving and all the extra siding required for the garage and not allowing to a place for two cars to park. I wish there was a way to shove that garage further back into the house. And I don't know if the Maddens have a plan to do that. But I guess I'd I'd allow both waivers. I mean, the sidewalk one, we beat to death. So until the committee and staff has an answer to that, I think that, you know, we're going to go down that path. But I guess I I would wish for a revised house plan if there was a way, but I really don't. I mean, I get the fact that the neighborhood has detached garages. I just, I think it's it's inefficient. We're paving more. We're we're having more runoff because we're having more paving. I I just think it's contrary to what we want to do. No matter what the code says.
Is that a motion, Greg?
No, because I threw that up hoping that we'd have somebody to combat us two Gregs and come up with a compromise.
Caleb Burksen, I just have a quick question. In the staff report, it notes that, you know, right now, the the garage is projecting thirteen feet from the front porch and staff would potentially allow a three foot projection of the garage from the front porch if that was, you know, a route we were to pursue. Does that even does that does that work with this kind of house plan? I'm just kind of curious if that's even viable.
Sure. I I think the applicant would need to probably look for a new house plan or or have this one revised. I don't I don't know if this is one they've developed or just purchased. Our our thought on that was is that that's, you know, of the houses of the seven or so that do have that front loaded garage, that they were all flush, set back, except for there was one that was three feet out. And so that was the basis for that recommendation. I get the impression that if the this their request isn't approved, that that their solution is to do the other alternative with the detached garage, which would be allowed by code.
Thank you. Uh, this is Abby. I also have a quick question and a comment. There's no setback issues with this plan currently, right?
Correct.
Okay, so another potential, I guess, workaround to allow what the staff is recommending is to potentially move the porch forward. Again, I'm not sure how that works with the overall plan of the house, but that would create the three foot depth instead of moving the garage further back. You'd actually move a portion of the house outward to get closer to the garage front. Just a suggestion. I don't have the full plans in front of me, but just a thought.
Yeah, I think the challenge with that that probably creates a multitude of changes since the the porch is covered by the primary roof there. I don't think you can see that. Yeah. I was trying to think, I don't know if Greg Watier has any thoughts on how else you do the porch, but I everything I think of to try to make the porch deeper, the roof form, it just would be awkward without just completely starting over.
Could widen the gable over the garage.
I think after nearly four hours, I don't think we need to redesign the home. I think that's their job. I think we just need to tell them whether or not it's okay to have the garage door out front of the house like they have it.
Well, this Francis Bogus speaking again. In my opinion, I think we might be nitpicking this. Someone driving down the street will really, I don't think they really pay much attention to whether it's the garage is three feet or thirteen feet out in front. So I would go along and make a motion that we grant both waivers for the reasons that I've stated before in my basic philosophy.
Thank you, Francis.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Francis. Is there any more discussion? If not, we'll take a vote.
Okay, Johnny Alcivar?
No.
Emily Webb?
Yes.
Dory Bries?
Yes.
Caleb Burksen?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jenison?
Yes.
Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Greg Watier?
No.
Greg Jones?
Yes.
Abby Chungith?
No.
Rocky Spazato?
Yes.
And Will Page?
Yes.
That motion carries ten three.
And thank you, Tyler. We have one more agenda item for the committee. Late this afternoon, staff sent out an email about a new project, planning project for the area of Des Moines, south of Grace Lake and east of Flure. And I'm just wondering if any commissioners would like to be a part of that representing the commission? And if so, all you would need to do is respond to the email.
And that email was generated by Confluence Landscape and Planning Firm that's in charge of the project there?
Is there anybody who would be interested in doing this? If not, I will to represent the commission. I just wanted anybody else who had a particular interest to do so.
Madam Chair, I would be interested in doing so, but I don't know if it's a conflict of interest since that's basically where I live.
I don't think there would be a conflict, but Jason, I might ask you to answer that.
Yeah, I you live within the planning area? Is that what you're saying, Johnny?
Yeah, within that area, south of Grace Lake and east of Flure.
I I don't think that that's a conflict. I know Judy with the legal department.
Yeah, I'm listening to that conversation and I would agree with that. There there is not a conflict of interest. Just merely being within the area and not having had any closer relationship to the property or the parties involved does not create a conflict of interest.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, Johnny, thank you for volunteering for that role.
Johnny, go ahead and just use that link that was in that email. Get yourself signed up.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other reports, Jason?
Uh, no, that was the only one we had for the evening.
Madam Chair, it there are committee reports, not that there's committee report as far as the sidewalk committee is concerned, but I would I would like to mention that Rick Madden's comment today, I thought, was pretty germane when he was talking about the sidewalk issue that we have in the city and that the way things stand right now are are preventing a timely development of residential
are, are preventing a timely development of residential construction in the city. So I think, at least for me, that's a concern and my concern is that we have a committee and I'd truly like to see the sidewalk committee moving forward.
Hi, Will. This is Bert Gross. I do know we have an internal meeting scheduled for March second to try to keep this committee moving forward. So I'm not exactly sure what the agenda is going to be for that March second meeting, but I do know we are trying to move things forward.
I'm glad to hear that, Bert. I'm very glad to hear that indeed, because the last meeting we had, there were some very good ideas that came forward and, and I just hate to see this fall by the wayside, quite frankly, because we're dealing with a problem, you know, every meeting.
Right.
Thanks.
Thank you. There are no other comments or reports. We will adjourn.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Getting close to past bedtime here.
Thank you all for hanging in there.
Have great, great job, Dory. Thanks, everybody.